Secretary Armijo, if you can call roll.
Good morning. Everybody hear me? Alrighty, Rebecca Burt.
Yeah.
Georgina, excuse me, Steve Correia. Michael Chavez. Georgina Davis.
Here.
Patricia Gibson. KT Manus. David Robbins.
Here.
Michael Taylor.
Here.
Glennne Voight.
Here.
And Melissa Armijo is here. So we have a quorum of six right now.
Thanks. And I know we have, both Commissioners Correio and Chavez have reached out and said they'll just be coming in a little bit later today. So we should see them later. But I think that will bring us to the first item.
Please re-enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
And that'll bring us to the first item on our agenda, which is our spotlight, which is our professional development.
Followed by pound. Otherwise, you have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
Commissioner Robbins, I think you're not on Mew and it's coming through on your, there you go. Alright. Um, so that this first hour of our work session each month will be professional development and learning for commissioners. So this month, I'm very happy to see a dear old friend and colleague of mine, Ken Stowe, um, who is here to talk to us about MLSS. So if that's not an acronym, one of the many education acronyms, if you're not familiar with it, then this presentation is especially for you. Um, so with that, I'm going to hand it over to you, Ken. Nice to see you.
Good to see you Chair Burt, and thank you to the Commission for inviting me here. And thank you to all the other education leaders that are on the line. I'm going to share my screen really quick. Can I get a quick thumbs up or some record? Okay, cool, cool. Well, hey, again, thank you all so much. Have a jam packed hour ahead of us. Um, if you're here to be talking about MLSS, you're in the right spot. My name is Ken Stowe. I work at the New Mexico Public Education Department as the Assistant Director for Curriculum and Instruction. I wear a few different hats. MLSS just happens to be the biggest hat I've been wearing the past few years. I also help out with our accelerated learning professional development. That's free professional development throughout the state, gifted education, the student assistance team process. So just know if any of those are of interest to you, uh, please reach out because that's, that's, those are all the things in my wheelhouse. Um, some quick session objectives. So hopefully by the end of the session, you'll be able to recognize the seven core elements of MLSS and explain them to another educator, understand, be able to describe the different graphic components of this circle that you're looking at, uh, identify student health and wellness supports. Excuse me, and how they contribute to holistic student success, right? We don't, we're not just focusing on academics here, but holistic student success. And always need to say make connections to the positive work that's already going on in our schools with our educators. A lot of what you'll hear today hopefully is not new. Um, MLSS has been existing out there in New Mexico for the past couple of years. Uh, this is the first year of over eight hundred schools reported self-reported on the MLSS self-assessment. So, um, hopefully some of this is new. Hopefully, a lot of us are somewhat familiar with what this, uh, what this work is. So real quick, I do like to start with, uh, with a, uh, with an activity. I don't know if we have that ability here, uh, Chair Burt, to, to have some sharing out, but I do think it's important before we start talking about student supports, equitable student access to, uh, universal core instruction, intensive interventions. It is important that we ground our thinking in, uh, in, in equity, in student equity. So it's important for us to think about what that means for us. Uh, this is an activity that I do when, when I present with, uh, uh, all across the state. And we try to think of when is the first time that you yourself either as a student, young, or as a professional in the classroom, working with schools? Um, when's the first time you realized that not all students receive an equitable education? And, and I do, I do like to ask folks to share out, but all, while, while maybe you're thinking about what that is, I'll share two things that, that relate to me. I'm going to share an example of when I was really young and when I was in the classroom. So when I was really young, I was going through foster care in my elementary school years. I went through four different placements. I was a handful in the classroom. I was definitely a terror. Um, because of that, I was put on IEP services for reading, for math. I was getting pulled out of the classroom. And I remember one time I'm stuck in this small classroom in the library, getting one-on-one reading intervention, just honestly being bored. And I hear the gifted kids out in the hallway racing these cool little milk carton rubber band cars that they had built in their extra, you know, project-based time. Uh, and I just remember feeling like, whoa, what did I do wrong? I want to be out there having fun with the rest of those kids, right? So that's my example of when I was really young. And then I grew up and I've become a teacher, right? And I really liked, uh, taking Cornell notes when I was an English teacher. I was big on Cornell notes with my students. That takes a lot of paper. If you've ever been, uh, a teacher and used Cornell notes, they take a lot of paper. My students ran out of paper in their binders before the first semester even ended. I go to my principal and say, hey, can I get some more binders? Uh, sorry, Mr. Stowe, we don't have any binders left over and we don't have any money to purchase any new binders. Uh, you do have loose leaf paper though. Have the students staple that loose leaf paper into the back of their already existing binders. And I'm like, oh my goodness. Even though I didn't have the best elementary experience, I was definitely never short of paper and binders and pencils and things like that, right? So, um, uh, and, and I, I, I don't know if, uh, folks that are on the panel would like to share out, uh, if that's even appropriate.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Um, Commissioners, I'll just ask you for today and tomorrow, just as a reminder, um, just go ahead and raise your digital hand. It's going to be the easiest way for me to see you. So that's going to be the, and then I'll call on people to help out. Um, Ken. Commissioner Armijo.
Good morning, Ken. Thank you for being here. Um, I'm not sure if this qualifies, but I think it does. Um, and I, I, I don't remember what context it was in or why it was being tested for like an IQ test or something. Um, but I, um, remember one of the questions being something, uh, to the effect of what, what do you do if you run out of bread? And I said, you make tortillas. And that answer was not right in their eyes. And I was like, but we usually don't even have bread. We usually just have tortillas. That's my experience.
Commissioner Armijo, thank you so much for sharing that personal story. You know, one thing that I drew out of that, knowing about background knowledge and how that's an equity issue when we start talking about student literacy. And that's an example of how in your young mind, you're like, I'm just going to make tortillas, of course, right? Uh, and of course, that not being the right answer because you know, the cultural context of the question you're being asked in the first place, right? That's definitely a student equity, uh, issue for sure. And I'll, I'll just take one more if, if I can. And, and if not, we can, we can move forward.
Alright, well, I'll say, um, one thing I remember, and this is from my own experience growing up too, is I went to high school, um, in a small role, smaller, more rural, um, high school for my freshman year and, um, moved into a more affluent, bigger school, uh, my sophomore year in a different part of the state. And I remember, um, as soon as I entered into this new school, they were asking me, well, what college do you want to go to? Where, where do you want to go to college? What do you want to, what do you want to do? And I'm like, wait, what? No one's ever asked me this before. No one ever asked me about college. What are you taught like? And it was such a norm for students at this new school to be thinking about it well before senior year. Um, about call, and it was very college driven. And that's when I was like, whoa, like the, this, these students, like, I, I was treated very differently at one school versus another and like being exposed to different opportunities and expectations um, at one high school versus a different school, um, in the same state.
Uh, Chair Burt, thank you so much for sharing another, uh, personal story about, about your school experience. The one thing I'm taking through that is equitable student expectations, right? We know through the opportunity myth, right? Through some research going on nationally that our teachers just do not have equitable expectations of our students that are oftentimes low income and students of color, right? That's, that's definitely a problem. And you experienced that just in the general universal expectations of the school culture of students, uh, being expected to have these conversations and be thinking about this well before you enter that sphere. So, um, I, I'm going to go ahead and move on. Thank you so much. Uh, I, I hope you found that, that useful. And even though it takes 10 minutes of our time, it's, it's more important than anything, like I can send you this slide deck and you can read off of each of these slides, but it's so much more important for us to ground ourselves in this work. So what is MLSS? To put it simply, MLSS is New Mexico's overhaul adaptation of the response to intervention framework, the RTI framework. Um, MLSS makes big changes by supporting student learning and behavioral needs by supporting teacher autonomy and freedom to make decisions for students, right? Without the need to send a student to the SAT team to do this, or send a student here, send a student there. No. What can we do with our students as classroom teachers and as collaborative teacher teams, right? This is one thing you're going to hear me talk about a lot today is our teacher PLC time and how important that is. Um, it's, i- i- it's important for us just to know, well, okay, what is in the rule, right? Where, where is, uh, where is MLSS situated within the New Mexico Administrative Code? So what we did is we overhauled the, the New Mexico Administrative Code that previously spoke to RTI. We made some big key changes. We first said there needs to be equitable access for all students for all layers. That's easy for me to say. That is big stuff, right? What we're talking about is equitable access to that layer one universal core instruction. What I mean by that is harmful pullout situations. I don't care if a student has an IEP, a BIP, an AIP. It doesn't matter what acronym you stick in front or behind a student's name. We need to be very cognizant about when we pull students out for one-on-one interventions, right? And hey, we need to be mindful of what's going on in the universal core instructional environment before we pull out, right? It can't just be on the adults. Uh, you know, hey, I'm the interventionist. I come pull Ken out at ELA class every Tuesday, Thursday. Uh, I don't necessarily care what's going on in class that Tuesday and Thursday because that's my schedule. I pull Ken out Tuesday, Thursday. Uh, so we need to avoid those harmful pullout situations. Um, without, and in, in the fluidity, without a need to convene a SAT, we made that change explicit in rule. Um, any layer, a parent may request initial evaluation to determine whether a student or child, uh, with a disability may require special education services, right? Um, it's important to note that, uh, doesn't matter if the student's in layer one, layer two, layer three, whatever layer you want to call it. Um, if a student has an immediate and obvious need, we need to refer that student to testing without any undue delay, right? And there's some Office of Special Education, there's an Office of Special Education, uh, memo that was published in two thousand and eleven that really says no intervention system should delay a student undue. And lastly here, there's no additional documentation requirements under MLSS besides what's just required to be a teacher, right? Um, having those, uh, having those formative assessment structures, having just good core instruction. Um, that's, that's really what MLSS is built. Um, I'm going to say it a few times, but MLSS provides support to all students, not just students that are struggling, not just students that are behaving well. As DeFor says, we need to get away from the if, right? Students are successful if they have an IEP, if they have a good home, if they have good behavior. Commissioner Robbins, I see you have your, your hand raised, sir. Uh, I think you're, I think you're muted.
I'll, I'll, I'll. Yeah, can someone mute, unmute my phone?
I think I can maybe help you out.
I cannot, I cannot mute your phone, Commissioner.
I can allow you to talk on that.
It's in the attendees.
Maybe you can. Yeah, I can, I can allow him to talk. So he's muted. So his phone is, is allowing to talk now.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I understand the thing about, you know, students who are experiencing difficult situations. There's no mention here about gifted students. Um, because they are special education. And, you know, when my son was in fourth grade, we had him tested. We had to press and press and press. Now, I'm going back over thirty-five years, almost thirty-five years ago, to have him tested, uh, his IQ. He tested at one fifty. His teacher said, oh, he's not gifted. He's not gifted. He's not gifted. He has an I had, or has an IQ of a hundred and fifty. And, you know, th- this is the challenge because, you know, I think all of these things are great. We need to help those students that are struggling and, and everything and have cultural things. But we also need to support those students and provide resources for those students who are exceptional. And I say exceptional in the sense of gifted learning. They are above average in their abilities to learn and grasp things. Otherwise, we hold them back. I mean, my, my son graduated high school with a C average. But he has IQ of a hundred and fifty. He had a C in math. Einstein flunked math in school. So, you know, the, the grades that they're receiving don't necessarily, um, relate directly to their abilities or to their educational, uh, level. Uh, and so we have to, uh, hopefully MLSS also takes that into account. Thank you.
No, uh, Commissioner Robbins, thank you so much for sharing that. And yes, MLSS does take our, uh, our enrichment services, uh, and assessments into account to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our exceptional and gifted students, right? Um, what, and thank you for sharing that, that personal story, right? Because here's a situation where, uh, where it sounds like from what I'm hearing from you that your son was just not challenged. And perhaps, you know, the grade that he received did not seem equitable to what you know as his parent, as the person that knows him best that, that he is capable of. And so there's a disconnect between, you know, what you're seeing and what the school is servicing and providing. And that's most definitely, uh, an element of, of what we're trying to do. And sir, I also, uh, uh, gifted education does exist here in curriculum and instruction division. So I would like to talk more on the side about your experiences in, 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 in having to wade through those waters of, of getting your students serviced. Um, you know, and, and, and that, that kind of does highlight the, the first bullet there, you know? MLSS provides supports to all students, not just the struggling students, but also our enriched students, our students that are exceptional. Um, MLSS empowers teachers and it reinforces the fact that all students are general education students first. Now, um, I'm not going to read every slide word for word. I'm going to be able to provide this slide deck to you and show you where to find it online if you'd like. So, um, if I'm skimming through and also don't feel like I have to take a bunch of notes because it's just going to be right here. Um, so some big changes. Under RTI, layer three was what? Special education, right? We have these students that are in layer three and they get interventions by these personnel and these personnel are paid for by these idea B funds. And it was real clear for us to say, okay, clear line from funding to student service there. Now we're saying layer three is for any student. So it doesn't matter if a student has an IEP or a BIP or what have you. All students should be able to get that pullout reading intervention if they need it. So you might be saying, well, that's all well and good, ped guy, but does that mean I need to go spend a lot more money, hire a bunch of new people, buy some new cool software and stuff? No. But we could be mindful about our school schedule systems. Do we have advisory hours built in, not just for a secondary student or elementary students, right? Do we have high dosage tutoring built into the school day? Things like that. That's how we move the needle forward here under MLSS. Um, remember there's no specified minimum amount of time. Under RTI, we're going, alright, we're going to do tier one, six to nine weeks. Uh, that didn't work. Okay, we're going to come together, talk. We're going to do tier two, six to nine weeks. Oh gosh, that didn't work. Now we're going to come together and talk. We're going to do tier, oh wow, we just lost so much valuable student learning time. The year's almost over once that system's gone. So instead of saying six to nine weeks for each layer, what we need to be talking about is, alright, what's the data behind the intervention that we're providing? And how often should we be collecting that data to know it's being successful? Meaning, layer three interventions, we should be progress monitoring that maybe every week or so, right? Because those are very intense interventions and we want to have multiple data measures to know we're being successful. Whereas universal layer one and, uh, interventions, well, those are just your core teaching, uh, curricula and interventions. Maybe twice a month, every other week, something like that. Um, all in the guise of the balanced assessment cycle. Not going to talk about this slide, uh, because I do want to speed up a little bit, but this is the data that we had before we made changes to MLSS. You might be going, oh, ped, why are you taking a hammer in this thing when it wasn't broken for us? Well, this data shows that it was broken for us across the state. Some districts and schools were doing RTI, boom. Some were already doing like MTSS, MLSS. And we're just not calling it that, right? But, uh, the majority of students throughout the state were just not being serviced under RTI. And this data shows, one, that RTI was failing in identifying students that actually qualified for services. Meaning it was, RTI was funneling students to SAT and special education diagrams that didn't need to be there. And so it was heightening caseloads and, 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 um, and people were spinning their tires. And then the second thing we looked at there is movement. How many students started out the year in tier two? And how many of those students actually moved out of tier two? Meaning, how many students did we actually help? And what we see here is not that many, right? The majority of students that started out the year in tier two, where were they at the end of the year? Tier two. What, what did we do, right? So i- it really just kind of calls into question. And be mindful, small sample size. These are elementary schools that participated in our, it used to be called RDA, results-driven accountability. It's now called RAMS, Reading Achievement, Math and School Culture. This is an elementary school initiative. So, small sample size, big, uh, big findings. Um, I've pretty much said everything that's already on the slide. Um, layer three is not just for students with disabilities. Any student can move in and out of any layer without, excuse me, the need for SAT and, um, and, uh, along the way, as we progress monitor, there's no rigid progress monitoring. This is the basic structure here of MLSS. We have seven core components. They're broken up into four key categories between classroom support, school supports, health and wellness, and, uh, and family and community. And, uh, Vice Chair, I see you have your, your hand raised and I apologize, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Could you please help me?
Uh, yeah, sure. It's like, it's Voight, like John Voight, my cousin.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, thanks so much, um, Kenneth, for this presentation. Um, you know, and I'm really, I'm really kind of, um, I wish every Commissioner was here because this stuff really helps us understand, uh, what our schools are doing well, where they might be challenged. And these seven core components align totally with our performance framework and the elements, uh, the performance areas that we're looking at revising. And so we've already had, um, the implementation of these, uh, health and wellness supports, family community supports embedded in our framework. But I just wanted to, uh, comment and then ask, so the early warning, uh, systems that was in place about, I don't know, seven years ago, really aligns well with the MLSS. So these two kind of work in harmony with each other, right? The early warning systems and the MLSS. And, um, I know the EWS was built on the ABCs, which is attendance, behavior and, uh, curriculum content. Um, as the early warning signs of, um, that would then phase into a SAT. And I'm so glad to see SAT going bye-bye because I always felt SAT was a funnel to special ed. And, and there was a, there was a time when there was a huge bottleneck of, um, sped referrals because of SAT. And people use that as a filter, funneling kids into special ed. And then all of a sudden, their goal was to exit them from special ed. But meantime, there was this bottleneck with special ed. And then there was a shortage of teachers and, you know, anyway, so I'm glad to see SAT going away. But, um, and thanks for that book. That book looks like it would be really good. Um, so my question is, is, is the early warning system completely gone now and replaced by MLSS? And I know MLSS is a national initiative as well.
Yeah, okay. So there are a few things there for, for me to unpack. One, yes, MLSS is nothing new. Um, before we started even building it, we reached out to Kansas. Kansas started MTSS back in two thousand and seven. And so they had many lessons learned about statewide implementation that we built on. Um, so when you see the success of MLSS, really the early infancy of that comes from the success of Kansas. Um, one thing I need to say just kind of clearly before I, I kind of, uh, provide some nuance, SAT is not going away. But the method and the way to which students get to SAT is changing a lot. We've decreased the amount of forms under the governor's order. I take these orders seriously, right? Under the governor's order to decrease the amount of paperwork and documentation for teachers, we've decreased the number of forms almost by fifty percent in SAT. Um, we have, uh, really been thoughtful about what are the requirements listed in statute and in administrative code to which students must be on a SAT. And what we say is if they don't meet one, and I, I have a slide for this here in a second, if they don't meet one of these six categories, they need to not be on SAT. And guess what? Now that districts are learning this, I'm helping draft exit letters to parents, right? And how do we communicate that now that your student's exiting SAT, they're still going to get a team-based approach to their student success? Through your profession, uh, through your teacher PLCs, your teacher collaborative teams, right? Uh, so it's important as, a lot of students are exiting this thing that parents have just gotten used to, right? It's important to, for us to communicate to our parents and families that they're still going to get a team-based approach. Sorry, I got on a bit of a, a soapbox there. Let me answer EWS question. Um, we have newsletters here and just to say, MLSS does not replace EWS, right? I know that there have been some conversations on changes around EWS, but, um, I really would encourage you. Uh, I spent a year looking internally at the PED and saying, what do folks need to know about? What are the connections that folks need to know about between MLSS and other programs, right? So here we have targeted collaborative newsletters developed internally that, um, that highlight the connections between MLSS and the Balanced Assessment System, MLSS and SEL, Special Education, Family Engagement, Health Wellness, and then CCRB, Early Warning System.
Right. So I have, that's really great. And so, um, I, I think, you know, really, the, the really, the ground level approach is, starts in the classroom with, you know, really knowing your students, with differentiated instruction and building relationships. Because I'll tell you, there's a lot of, um, teachers that will jump instantly to SAT. You know, because Tommy threw a pencil five times within a week, SAT. I, so anyway, that's just an example of some things I've seen. But I have another question. So, um, of the schools that self-reported, I mean, that's a great number of schools that self-reported their MLSS. Of the schools that self-reported, I mean, that's a great number of schools that self-reported their MLSS. How many of those were charter schools?
Oh, great question. Um, we got almost a hundred percent of charter schools. Yes, and that's local and state authorized charters.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if if you happen to be familiar with Shelley Sharon.
Yes.
Uh, she's pretty big in the charter world. Okay, she's our charter MLSS coach.
Good, yep, I knew that.
Yeah, she's the one that really uh, helps support all of our charters. So.
Yep.
I'm gonna pick on Albuquerque School of Excellence here and and show you their data. That they've uh, given me permission to do this and in other presentations. So let me just show you an example of a charter page. So here you go, here's Albuquerque School of Excellence, MLSS uh, self-assessment. The first thing I can see here that I love, look at all the names that are listed here under their leadership team. That tells me that it wasn't just an assistant principal sitting in a closet. Fifteen minutes before they are trying to get out of the school. You know, selecting a bunch of measures and turning them in, right? It tells me that Albuquerque School of Excellence really took this seriously and sat pretty much their whole staff, it seems like. Sat down their whole staff to do this self-assessment.
Yeah.
Okay, so then what do I look at? Then I come over here and I look at their summary data. And I'll I'll show you what's with what each of these kind of means a little bit more. But this is out of layer one, out of layer two, out of layer three, school support, so. Uh, I I'm kind of putting the cart before the horse here on my presentation, right? But the layered supports are their boots on the ground, teachers in the classroom, the school supports are how our administrators helping support our teachers, right? So you know, how are they monitoring success, providing feedback that's nonevaluated, things like that.
That's great. And you know, I just want to reiterate too, and you probably already know this, Ken. That charter schools do so much with so much less than traditional big public schools. So in your capacity, um, in your job at PED, how can you share? What you've seen come through with charter schools to the bigger district schools? You know, without saying, well, the charters are do, you know, without that kind of tone, how can you share? What you see happening in charter schools with big districts?
Oh, that is a great question. And I I would say that Albuquerque is kind of like the biggest one in in that puzzle, right? Helping support the communication between the larger district and the charters that exist within that district, right? Because locally authorized charters, no matter how much communication you get from the district, you always kind of feel outside of the district. That's just the nature of of the feeling, right? Sometimes that's just how it feels. Um, I can say a couple things. One, I recognize that need entirely. And that's why we have a dedicated coach that does, she's Shelley, does nothing but service our charters. Because she understands the needs of charters. So the first thing is. Appoint a person as a coach that understands their needs. So boom, I checked that box, right? The second thing is understand, and I do, I do understand this because I come from federal program, I come from Title One and policy. Um, I do understand the big differences in funding. And so not under MLSS, but in our accelerated learning professional development, our free professional development. I've created a consortium specific to charters. That not only provides free professional development, but also provides stipends to leadership teams and teachers to participate, right? Uh, because you you know, it's easy for us to say, oh, we're gonna pay for the PD, but use your own money for the stipends. Well, charters like what money, right? So um. Uh, and and uh, um. And I will say also, in our district uh, planning project, this is like the first year. I don't have a slide on this, it's kind of a project that exists on the side. It was mostly charters that participated in that project. And that, what that did was it provided the schools with a swivel, an iPad. And it, and a uh, a year-long subscription to the swivel platform. To help with teachers observing themselves. Teachers can record themselves. And share out that video, not just to their principal, but to their entire teaching team. And get feedback from the entire teaching team in almost real time, right? So.
Yeah.
Um.
You know, I mean, what this says, I mean, because I, you're speaking a lot to what charters are doing and their participation at a hundred percent and all of this stuff. But I mean, the, and we know our charter schools are doing, you know, a rock star job. But um, how can this practice? Um, spill over to district schools? I mean, APS would, they would need a twelve-person MLSS team, right? To help filtrate that out to all of their, uh, you know, eleven high schools and. You know, forty-eight middle, I mean, that's the kind of. Capacity that they would need. So what is PED doing um, to help the district schools? Um. Be as efficient and uh, and as successful as some of the charter schools?
No, thank you, Vice Chair. That's a, that's a good question, right? So the first thing we do is we provide hours and coaching to all districts, right? So all districts have a point of contact they decide. Albuquerque is low-hanging fruit. Albuquerque has plenty of money, right? On the exact flip side of things, they were able to hire someone who is their MLSS person there at the district. That person curated all of the, you know, there's a hundred and seventy-six schools in Albuquerque. She got almost a hundred percent of those schools, I think a hundred and sixty-some to self-report on this MLSS self-assessment. So um, the way that we help support our districts. Is helping identify a point of contact and providing the training and professional development to that point of contact. To help move things throughout the school, uh, the the other schools. Now. Our rural charters are really in a, our rural districts are really in a bad spot because they have multiple schools to consider. But oftentimes not the funds to hire someone to move between those multiple schools and help service technical assistance, right? So for those like rural charters, we do see them calling upon our MLSS coaches. For more coaching hours, because it's actually them asking the coach, hey, can you go provide an MLSS overview at this middle school? And then walk them through the self-assessment and then they'll submit that. Whereas in Albuquerque, they hired someone and they're able to just do that. So um, really, we try not to step in. I try not to step in and start telling folks what to do. Because you're gonna turn people off, right? The biggest thing is getting everyone to the table, completing the self-assessment and then saying, hey, look at that data. O- okay, hey, I noticed that your family engagement measure was your lowest scoring measure. Okay, why don't you open up your ninety-day dash plan real quick? What what did we identify as what we wanted to work on in our dash point? Is that the same or different from what's in our MLSS? Why might that be? Are we spinning our tires on one thing when we could be combining them? How can we break funding to help support these different initiatives and the personnel we might need to hire? So that those con- those conversations are where we try to get at with all of our schools. Um, and this was the first year of just this basic data measure. So we did well getting this baseline data. And so now the question is, all right, Ted, guys, sounds good. What are you gonna do with that? You got all this data. What are you gonna do with that? And so all of our coaches went through all eight hundred and nine self-assessments. And they have a self-assessment coaching form. Where they look at the lowest scoring measures, they look at some of the context provided in the self-assessment. And then they give ideas of programmatic ideas, funding, grading of funding ideas, ideas for professional development. And then, you know. I'm sitting here talking about the high flyers. Do you think all eight hundred and nine schools did it the same way Albuquerque School of Excellence did it? No way. Right? And so some schools, it's just getting them to understand the importance of it still. They did it because they needed to check a box. But so um, it's important for us to remember, when I talked to Kansas, they've been doing this since two thousand and seven. They said, look, Ken, we have schools that are still doing RTI and calling it MTSS. We have folks that are doing RTI and calling it RTI, you know? Um, and it's uh, moving, moving the boat and just trying to get folks uh, to understand that was our first goal this year. And so we're, we have a lot of data, we've provided coaching on that data to individual schools. And we're looking to just. Better this process. And so that's, that's a big reason why I like to come and present to. Um, experts like yourself and hear. What you're feeling and what you're hearing when I present this information, because that helps inform. What, you know, the different nuances we might provide in in our professional development.
If no one else has a question, I just want to say, so when you just said that, you know, what we're hearing. So I just heard last week from a a bunch of. High school teachers from traditional, from a traditional APS high school. How much they hate charter schools because, and it's because of, it it's because the way they do things, okay? So I didn't, you know, I just listened, but um, but they, but I think traditional schools kind of need to hear also. Why these, these types of education programs work for charter schools? But also how they can implement these structures into a, a larger. Traditional public school. Because um, the more that charter schools can share with traditional. Public schools practices, um, the better every kid's gonna be. You know, it's not necessarily about charter schools and traditional public schools. Because we're all doing the same work for the same reason, hopefully. Um, so hopefully there can be some sharing of those practices.
Thank, thank you so much, Vice Chair. And I I do agree with that. I think that there's um. Definitely lessons learned coming up from charters to our larger districts, right? Because of the constraints that our charters need to work with. Um, I do encourage you, uh. When, when I share this slide deck, there's gonna be some links in there. Please explore our website. Click on the link to the self-assessment, request an account. And that'll allow you to maybe look into some of the schools that you're working with and 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 look at their data. This is all public data. There's no student information, nothing's identifiable. It's all self uh, reported, so. Uh, I'm gonna move, gonna move along here. I leave this in here. I usually do a core component activity with folks to try to think about. What do you, what is your school doing well? What is your school, maybe, what what could, what core component could your school improve upon? And we have some conversation about that. Um. The innermost circle, the classroom supports, remember that's our layered supports. That's where our layered supports exist. Everything needs to be fluid. Data informed and evidence-based, no compromises at all three layers, right? Under RTI, we were saying, oh, only tier two and three need to be evidence-based. No. Everything we do in education needs to have some evidence for it. Does it need to, to meet the tier one evidence? In ESA of like double-blind peer review, all of that, no. But you do need to have some context that what we are doing is working. You can't just be throwing spaghetti at a wall, right? So um, okay. Uh, we have uh, some documents and supports to help teachers and schools understand this process. This is one form document that we have of many, of two manuals, many different forms. This is one, this is the most used. This is our continuum of supports flow chart. This really guides teachers in understanding, okay. Um, is this a reteach? Is this something that uh, requires enrichment and acceleration, right? What are, what are the interventions that we're using and how often should we be checking in? As a team, hopefully, to see um, i- if these things are working, right? And so you'll see at layer one, we say interim assessments. That's the bare minimum, layer one interim assessment, bare minimum. Right? As a teacher, hopefully you're doing informative assessments and gathering like two, three progress measures each week. With your common formative assessments that you worked so hard planning with your, your teacher team. But at the bare minimum, that layer one, that's our interim assessment, that's our short-cycle assessment structures, right? Layer two, we need to be checking in on that about two times a month, roughly. And here's some ideas on do we think student progress is likely, unlikely, yes, no, moving up and down on the layers. Um. So digging into each of the layers, let's look at what this is. And for each of these slides, again, not gonna read every word, there's a lot of words on here. But I give you the language that's in New Mexico Administrative Code. And then I kind of blow up the image from the continuum of supports flow chart to show you what that layer looks like on the flow chart. Um. Again. In New Mexico Administrative Code, when making it a determination, may consult with non-teacher staff such as counselors, paraprofessionals, administrators. And ancillary personnel, getting at the holistic student image, right? Not just saying, oh, they failed the ICE station. But maybe, hey, what's going on in that student's life? Maybe that's why they failed the ICE station. Maybe we should check in on other things besides just academic assessments and things. And um, here's some just basic ideas of what layer one supports look like, academic and behaviorally. We're talking about basic stuff, just having high-quality core curriculum and supplemental materials. Um, having good anti-bullying policies and social contracts, things like that. That's what layer one looks like in behavior. And um, this is a screenshot from our implementation guide. So at each layer for almost all the progress measures, for a lot of the high-flying progress measures. We provide a table that says, what is your role and responsibility in implementing this progress measure? And so we can see here under layer one, what is my role as a district leader? As a school leader and as a classroom leader? And what are some of the resources and tools I can call upon to help me do this work? Here's the layer two. You'll see layer two as we move up. We're talking about more individualized supports, but none of this requires a SAT, a BIP. Uh, an I, an IEP, an AIP. Hey, one thing I like to talk about is even when we start thinking layer three, let, let's, let's take something. I was a middle school teacher. Uh, you have classroom A, classroom B, during passing period. Classroom A student, classroom B student, there's bullying behavior going on, right? Okay, we need to intercept that. So does it take an IEP, a VIP, a SAT just to say, hey? How about we let one student transfer to their classroom five minutes early before the passing period? And at the same time we do that, let's get the students talking to the counseling staff and talking to our administrative staff. Individually, so we can find out what's going on. You didn't need to send the student somewhere for someone to tell you to do that. And guess what? That is, that is an intervention I've seen in BIPS. Early passing periods, do we need to put, like, it it, you know, so it's kind of blowing. Our of our understanding of what do we have the power to just do without someone telling us that it's okay to do it? No, you you do not need a BIP for behavioral contract for individual schedules. You don't need an IEP to tell you, hey, maybe providing one-on-one reading interventions to the student is the best thing to do. You don't need a team to tell you to do that. What you do need is data. Right? And so that brings us back to our balanced assessment. And we need to make sure that we're not just relying on our end-of-year summits. We're not just relying on those BOY, MOY. Uh, ICE stations, but we are balancing our assessments with more formative practices. Exit tickets, things like that, that give us uh, multiple measures within one week. Here's just, currently, this is what our assessment structures look like. Course always pending the change, you know, but currently, you know, we're using K through two math, ICE station, things like. Um, I'm not gonna talk a lot about this slide, but. Uh, just know, I love to talk a lot about accelerated learning and I would love to talk more to this uh, to this. Commission about accelerated learning practices. But we need to think of grade level standards as the floor, not the ceiling. And we need to not hold back on grade level instruction just because, hey, I have a seventh grade student that's reading at a fourth grade level. So I'm just gonna throw them fourth grade texts until they can show me they're ready for this seventh grade material. That's inequitable student access to instruction. So, uh, you know, more to, more to say on that. I don't want to get on that soapbox because I'm running out of time. But uh, teacher PLCs, just note, this is where MLSS happens. This is where SAT happens. Like, this i- i- we, instead of sending students to SAT, can we get together as teacher teams and talk to one another? Now, with our charters in rural districts, um, sometimes it's hard because it's like, I am the one math teacher here. Who do I talk to, right? And so again, it's building up systems and that's one thing that Sher- uh, Shelley and I have talked about a lot. Um, when districts like request this, we're trying to create consortiums. That's one of the reasons why I I told you we recreated that accelerated learning consortium just for charter schools. Because we recognize that that is a need to get our math. Because we recognize that that is a need to get our math teachers talking to one another from different charter schools, right? Uh, so anyways, just to say that um. Student progress decisions need to be made at a team level and not just individual teachers. Because as Vice Chair noted, when individual teachers are just left to their own devices and don't have anyone to collaborate with. You have teachers referring for, uh, you know, they broke their pencil, they, they uh failed this one. Uh, ICE station thing, and that's not what special education was said or there to do. Um, I'm going to speed up just a second, just I wanna talk about our wrapper. Supports. These are a health and wellness, family and community supports. This is the kind of where the rubber meets the road on holistic student uh success. It's important for us to remember that these are additions to the supports that we provide inside of our schools. We cannot say, oh, we have no control about what's going on at home, so we can't do anything, so there's nothing we're gonna do. That's not how school works, that's not how, that's just not our role and our service to our communities, right? So um, health and wellness, the one thing I love to point out here is staff wellness, it's easy for us to forget about the fact. That our students expect us to be superwoman, Superman, right? When we show up at the door and, hey, we have lives too. And sometimes we need help navigating some of the stuff that's going on in our lives. So the staff wellness, the community building is not small potatoes. And, and making sure that our students feel welcome, uh, but all of these other things, of course, a healthy and safe environment, health-related services. Um, family supports. I like to say it's all well and good to have pancakes with the principal, that cooking night, let's come watch a video or something, that's great, like, that community building needs to happen. But when we talk about family supports in MLSS, we talk about academic and behavioral family support. So how, especially in distance learning, as we're popping in and out of COVID and what's gonna happen. It's important that our families feel um onboarded and comfortable with helping their students with their technology. Helping their students find resources with their education, right? Um, and then all of these other things that are on there, quiet time at home. But it's mostly, most importantly, just not waiting for the quarterly parent-teacher conference. It's about making positive phone calls that first week to each and every student. Um, there's even more work going around home visits. And that's not, oh, I haven't seen Ken for three weeks, so let me grab the counselor and go to his home. No, that is teachers actually going to the home of each and every student and just saying hi and introducing themselves. That's the new, that's the new groundbreaking work that's going on in family supports around home visits. Um, and then lastly, community supports, we bolster the four pillars of the Community Schools Act. Now, I, I, my soapbox on this is. Um, some schools are like, hey, we didn't get funds through the Community Schools Act, so we're not a community school, so why should we care? We're not gonna do that part in the self-assessment. And I like to say, just as we say, it doesn't matter if a student has an AIP, DIP, I. Same thing with schools, I don't care if you get money for this, for that, or whatever, right? Yeah, that's well and good, if you have the money, you are technically a community school, but we should all strive to be community schools. We should all strive to implement the four pillars of the Community Schools Act, right? Whether or not we get money for it. So that um, we really do bolster our integrated student supports. ELTP, K5 plus, active family community engagement, and uh just collaborative leadership and practice. Um, honestly, the SAT conversation is a totally different conversation, that's like an hour in itself. But just know, as I said earlier, these uh, when you receive this slide deck, review these six bullets. If a student does not meet one of these six bullets, they should not be on SAT. And as you can see, these are pretty high bars to me. Obvious disability, a gifted referral, a student has been retained or is in danger of being retained. A student has been restrained, as in behaviorally restrained. Or the student has exited special education, this is not, the student failed my formative assessment. This is not, the student failed the ICE station, this is not, the student threw a pencil. You know, so um, I would love to, to talk more. Here's some highlights of the data, as I wrap up, as I said, eight hundred and nine schools reported on this. Our coaches generated two hundred and eighty-seven coaching reports. We provided over two thousand hours of coaching services to our schools throughout the state. And we blew the lid off of the SAT process and decreased the amount of phones and made it more equitable for our teachers and students. Um, a few things we're looking forward, forward to next year, continuing to just bolster our PLC processes. And continue to provide some support in that, focus on accelerated learning, that's the big thing. Learning acceleration's not just, oh, um, students skipping grades, enriching students, but how do we catch students up? With the same amount of time, right? Uh, high-dose tutoring, that's the answer to the accelerated learning piece. And then use of the uh NMIS. And we have these updated resources, I'm gonna put the link to the webpage in there. Here's, we only have three requirements for MLSS at the state level, it's important to remember that, right? We're not asking for a whole lot at the state, we ask that you identify someone for us to talk to. That that person tries to attend monthly meetings, but if they can't, we send the recording. And that that person ensures that the self-assessment is. Coaching services available, just anything and everything can fall under MLSS. So if your school wants help with something, call me, I bet you I can get you some free professional development in that area. Um, here's some books, we sent. All of our principals throughout the state received a copy of the latest before book on professional learning communities. The other two texts were sent to our one hundred and forty-two, three, I forget the number now. Uh, points of contact, uh, so that's our state charters and, and district leaders, and there's my uh. There's my contact, and I'm sorry that I kind of just spoke in a fury. Um, but we do have maybe just a few minutes for questions, but I'd love to talk more on the side. And.
Yeah. Now I'm you.
Okay, thanks me, okay, thanks Ken very much, um. Could you, could I get a copy of that CLR book by Cherokee Holly?
Um, Vice Chair, I believe if you would like a copy of that book, I could somehow get one over to you, yes.
If you have any stash in a closet somewhere, but don't go out of your way to order another one, but if you have any.
Oh, it's, it's not gonna be going out of our way, I'm sure. Um, I'll, I'll work with Chair Bird to, to maybe get your contact information.
Me too, me too.
Okay, I'll, I'll get con- how, how about we just the, the whole commission maybe, I don't.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, uh, I, I uh, um, don't quote me, all right, don't hold me to it. But I do think that I have about fifteen or twenty-some odd uh copies left over at Southwest RNC, so let me see.
Thank, thank you so much, but I did have a question also, but thanks a lot for that, um. So, I, I, have you heard of UNM Echo?
Yes, I have you heard of UNM Echo.
You know, um, I believe Mike Stanton is still directly involved in that. Uh, as far as like the educational branch outside of the healthcare uh piece. Um, but they've gotten international recognition for how they're distributing and creating uh. Well, distributing information through communities of practice. And um, it would, this is something that would be so, that is so important, I mean, your presentation and everything that you covered. I think is so important, and um, when I, when I hear of things like this, these little jewels. Of wonderful things going on in education, I want everyone to know about it. And UNM Echo is a great platform for that, and it's free. And it, it's just basically um, getting in touch with Mike Stanton and then telling him about it, he'll get really excited. And then he'll, he'll create a platform for distribution. And what it is, it's people who um, it's practitioners. So, the schools like that, um, Albuquerque School of Excellence, they would go on and be the facilitator. Uh, to help along with yourself, uh, get this information out and um, but it's the hows, you know, how do you do this work? But it's a great venue for sharing um, really good practices. So I'm not suggesting, I'm just gonna put that nugget in your ear. That, you know, UNM, UNM Echo is a really great uh platform for sharing uh practices, and thank you for the book.
I see Director Travis has her hand up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank um Kenneth for presenting to PEC. And also presenting at the Charter Schools Conference last week. Um, and for working really closely with us to create the consortium for charter school leaders that are. That is specific to charter schools, I know you've had a great response. And so I'm really excited about that work and the support that schools will get. I also just wanted to offer um, that if um, my office can help to um. To send out the books to any PEC members that you're able to obtain copies for, um, we're happy to facilitate that.
Director Travis, thank you so much, how about this? Let me reach out to Southwest RNC, see how many copies we got hanging out in the back room. And uh, I'll, I'll get them over to, to your office, how about that? Okay, great.
All right, um, I have mine already, so you don't have to. Get me one, but um, thank you so much, Ken. I know um, when I was working at the PED, um, Ken worked a lot with our community engagement group. Trying to get the word out about MLSS, which was now years ago. So I was so excited to see you have over eight hundred schools self-reporting this, I know it was just such a big lift. So that was really exciting, just for me, just in general, just to see how the work has been able to progress over the years. Um, I know I was really excited, when I, I, I know anybody who's been a teacher before. Um, knows that SAT was just counterintuitive to a teacher. It just did not feel like you were doing the best thing for your student um, by following the SAT process. Um, and the RTI model, just, it just, it was so counterintuitive. Um, so I was really excited for MLSS to really give teachers the leverage to be experts. Um, that they are, I really feel like it honors teachers uh much more as professionals. And that they know what they're doing um, than RTI did. So um, I'm especially thrilled to have heard about the Charter School Consortium. I think it's really important that, that, you know, when rollouts like this happen, and it is a big change. I mean, it's a change to the culture of the school, to the process of the school, I mean, something that schools have been really. Like, have known what the RTI SAT process is for so long. So to change that is a really huge thing, and um, it is important that charter schools work together. And get a little bit different treatment um, towards these kind of things. Because what they do have to go through is a little bit different than a district, having um, you know, folks to come and help support them. Um, they are their district, so I'm really happy to have heard about that. And how exciting to see the data that you have coming in about it. Um, it's really exciting, so thanks again. Thank you, um, Karina, for getting such a great spotlight for us this morning. And we're really grateful for it, and I know um, Vice Chair Voight was already telling me like. So, so we can, we should look at this for our performance framework, like, we need to look at, you know. Um, some of these things that are being already done by schools, if they're already being done, like, let's not duplicate. And, and tell them to do something different um, in, in our performance framework, so looking at that. So we'll definitely be reviewing that um deck that you sent over to us. Um, probably more often than you thought originally when you sent it over, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Bird, and to the rest of the commission, please reach out if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, um, let me pull up our agenda for today. All right, so item number two um, is the Charter School Division Timeline. I know I'm very excited for this, so I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Director Travis. Um, item A is the yearly timeline of CSD work. Um, I know CSD put a lot of work into doing this timeline for us, so um. All yours, Director Travis.
Absolutely, thank you, and I will ask um Missy Brown to um assist me with this. Um, feel free, Missy, to um chime in at any point. I know that um, Missy is really key to a lot of these functions as well. And Bridget actually helped pull together the document that is in your materials commissioners. Um, so it's a one-pager, we're trying to be really succinct. Um, it's item number three. And um, it is divided up both by, um, it's a grid that's divided up both by um. Function of um, what we do. Um, such as reviewing new charter school applications. Um, the implementation year, the renewal work. Annual monitoring and support of um, of schools, and then some administrative work. Um, by month, so our year starts in July. Um, and. And so that's the first month that you'll see um, on the list. And, and you'll see that we also made some notations uh for you in red. With the things that PEC takes lead on, um, or makes a decision about. So um, if you just take the first column, the new charter school applications, as you know. Um, they come in at the end of June, so looking at July is uh when we have the capacity interviews. Um, and, and we have the community input hearings. Um, we don't have the final dates for, for this, because each year it varies. Um, and then in August is the uh report and analyses um, that go to the PEC. Um, sometimes that happens in July um, or in August. But it is to help you uh make a decision at the new application hearings that happened in August. Um, in September, um, we know that that's when schools start their um implementation year. Now, in statute, it's called a planning year, and each new school gets, as you know, five years of an initial term with one year of planning. Um, at some point, it got renamed to implementation year. So um, so that's how we're um listing it here. And at tomorrow's PEC meeting, um, you will get um. You will get to hear from the two schools that are currently in the implementation year. You will get a chance to take a look at that final document, which shows all of the requirements that the schools must undergo. Um, during the implementation year. Um, so. I could keep walking through the um various activities related to each of the content areas. If you would like commissioners, or I could give you a chance to take a look at this and ask any questions. Um, just wanted to make sure that this is a very succinct. But um comprehensive list on the charter activities that happens out of my office. And for each of the items, it, you know, it, it might be just a small phrase. Um, like peer review training, but the work that goes into that, um, as Ms. um Brown could attest. Is that there's, there's the time and energy put into um selecting peer reviewers. So we work with the SWRAC, who you all know, we have um. In a uh contract with, to put out a call for peer reviewers. And then we screen, determine who would be the peer reviewers, and then work very closely with them. Um, in June, uh, which is right now, um, we, there's some intensive work with them. As they are reading through the one application that came in very thoroughly. Um, analyzing what it has relative to the rubric and providing us with a report. That will help with the um capacity interview. And that's the new charter school application work. Um, if you move over to the implementation year. Um, y- you know that um, there are several trainings, and each one of those trainings is um. I would say um, about a half day long, I don't get to go to all of those. But again, Missy um coordinates and does a really excellent job of making sure that the schools that you've approved. Come to Zoom sessions where they learn about everything that is required of a new school. I would say the implementation year is heavy on compliance, understanding. On the part of the new schools and um, and work that will. on the part of the new schools and and work that will set the school up to be able to open up its doors fully compliant. So every requirement that that is of a public school and a charter school, the schools at this point, before they have students, must create a plan, policy, and address. I see Commissioner Cardio's hand up, so I'm going to pause. You're on mute, sir.
That's funny, I was thinking of asking the question later, and letting you speak more, but it's relevant now too. So something we may want to consider as a commission, don't have to do anything right now, is when is having the very first contract term for a brand-new charter be only three years instead of five? And the reason I say that is when we look at kind of principles of business in the private and even the public sectors, and even if we look at the way we hire superintendents in New Mexico, it's never more than a three-year contract. And initially, if someone's going to hire, you know, a general manager or a head coach or a CEO or something, they're not going to give a five-year contract because they want to see what these people can do. They want to see what the administrative people and the head learner and everyone.
I'm not sure if this is a part of our agenda right now.
Well, it's talking about the, we were talking about.
This is the CSD timeline?
It's the timeline, but it's just the nature of, we can talk about it later, but it's just the idea. She talked about the contract term with new schools and stuff like that. And so just something, we can discuss it more later. That's totally fine, but it's certainly something to put in the hopper.
Thanks, Commissioner Cardio. It is in statute right now, so that, just so you know, that's a statutory directive. So back to the implementation year checklist. That is a checklist that needs to be reviewed every year because the legislature meets and they put into law new directives for public schools. So for example, last year, the, there was a bill that introduced the Black Education Act and all of the requirements associated with that. Schools needed to put into place some policies. They needed to put in to play some practices, and and that needed to be added to the implementation year checklist. There's other examples that come out of the legislative session, which the results of don't get signed into law until the governor has signed them, February, March. And so so that is why it makes a lot of sense for us to revise the implementation year checklist after that. Also this year, having gone through the process and, you know, I rely heavily on my staff this year, Ms. Barbara Gradner and Ms. Marty Rincon have really, sorry, Ms. Samantha have have really worked closely with the schools for their implementation year checklist to receive the submissions. The implement checklist, implementation checklist has three separate dates for schools to provide their policies, plans, whatever it requires. And so again, Barb and Sam have worked really closely with the two new schools to review, sometimes send back to the schools any sort of changes that might need to be made if if the plans and the policies aren't thorough, and then to review again and approve. So it is a lengthy process. And it culminates, as it is this month, with your vote on the commencement of operations based on our review of all of the implementation year work that the schools have done. And so as we've gone through this process, we've noticed, for example, that there's a little bit of redundancy in some of the requirements in the checklist. I don't know if Dylan knows off the top of his head how many pages the blank checklist is. That's without filling in any of the comments or or feedback, but it's it's a lengthy document. It's posted to the PEC webpage and it is a lot of work, as I know the schools will attest to when they present to you, and which you'll see in your materials next for tomorrow. So that's the implementation work. In terms of the renewals, those of you that have been on the commission for a while may recall that my team creates Part A of the renewal application, which is a compilation of data that that the PED already makes to provide to the schools. And we we give that to the schools as soon as we can in the year. You know, we start working on it in in July, but usually it's August by the time we get it to the schools. And then this year, the schools have until September 15th to submit their renewal applications. We conduct renewal site visits and are reviewing the application throughout, and we begin to prepare the preliminary reports in October. The hearing for renewals is in December. And then and then we start to work with the renewal schools on their their, the goals that they do typically. And so as we work with them, one of the things that we have that I've reflected on for this year is that there's a couple of different schools, for example, that have been transitioning, that transition from being locally authorized to being state authorized. And so that's a new category of school. I want to call them the transition schools that we, I think, need to provide more specific and direct support to them as they go through that transition. They have a different legal status, different interface with PED. They may, for the first time, be organizing their own, for example, I think, expanding on maybe their own special ed services, things that maybe professional development. I know that Albuquerque Public Schools provides a lot of professional development to the locally authorized charter schools. So should a school move from being authorized by APS to being state authorized, they would need to put into place some of the test coordinator training and other things that APS currently provides. I see that Dylan has posted that the blank implementation year checklist is 30 pages long, so it's rather comprehensive in terms of the requirements that we make of schools once they are approved. Um, so back to the renewal. We also do training. So this is might be a little confusing. So for example, if you look at the months of January and March, those are schools that have not yet submitted their renewal application. And we keep track of every charter school across the state, whether it's locally authorized or state authorized in terms of their charter terms. We know when they expire, we know by January, we know right now, but we would know by January who's up for renewal. And we would organize a training and invite everybody. We are often in contact with the local districts as well. So for example, we invited Joseph Escobedo and folks from APS to join us in the renewal training because at that point, we don't know. If the school submits their renewal application in October, we don't know if they might switch authorizer and come to the PEC or stay with their local authorizer. So we have invited both the schools, whether they are district authorized or state authorized, and we have invited authorizers as well to join in that training. So the January training number one and the training number two in March are for schools that are thinking about renewal in October. At that point, they do not need to tell us who they're going to renew with, but at least we have started to engage. We're not we're not grooming them to be renewed by the PEC, but we are maintaining contact and a lot of, and we're providing some model services in terms of what is the renewal process? What should you have in your application? How do you start to prepare for renewal? Because one of the things that the schools will have to do is to obtain those affidavits of and the signatures of support for renewal from their community. I'm going to pause and see if there's any questions around renewal at this point. No? Okay, so given that timeline, you know, the whole renewal process is due, is done in December, and it is at that point that we have reflections for how it went and would be prepared to make edits to documents such as the renewal application. And that's in time, that's prior to the first training that is provided to schools that are up for renewal next. So I know that we have created some rhythms of when we edit documents. I'm just telling you what works best for the Charter Schools Division in terms of our work and our continuous improvement in our processes. When we go to the next column, which is the annual monitoring and support, you all have heard from us about the the process that we've used throughout to prepare for the site visits, to conduct the site visits, to to prepare annual reports for you all. And in addition to the oversight and monitoring, we're also providing technical assistance and support to governing board members in particular, have access to monthly training on all of the topic areas that they need to meet in order to be in compliance with the requirements of governing board training. Of course, they have the opportunity to also participate in training provided by Public Charter Schools New Mexico, Matt Paul's group, and others that are approved by our technical assistance team. But our technical assistance team makes themselves available to provide all of the training to governing board members throughout. We rely on a lot of the the PED systems, such as the DASH systems, to also review school improvement plans and and I don't and so you'll see the school improvement plans in DASH in February is one of the dates that we are looking at that. And then the final column in this document is administrative and and here is where we are looking at quarterly budget reviews in October and and the projections that we have. Schools are budgeted based on their projections, but the Public Education Department adjusts the adjusts the school's budget based on actual student enrollment. So we are monitoring the school's budgets. We are working very closely with the School Budget Bureau at PED. There's also the work that we do with you to set up the PEC calendar and to approve the OMA resolution to review any contracts and and to work with the contracts and the IGAs in order to support the work that happens from the PEC. There's constant need to update the website and make sure that things are flowing. I'm just going to pause there again to see if there's any questions. Oh, I see Julia's hand is up.
I'm going to make sure commissioners had an opportunity. I just have some technical stuff to talk about. I think this is a really great document. I like love this document. I first, I think, as soon as it's finalized, it should go as the first document on what's happening at the PEC so that people can see the annual cycle kind of in an overview. So I really, really like it. And Karina, I know that Bridget is not here today, and I know that you compliment your staff often, but please add on from us. I think this is a great document. There, there are a couple of things that I think the PEC has decided to do that just need to be added. So I can just highlight those. And then there's a couple of things that I think we'll continue to discuss as a commission in terms of the rhythm. And then this ties in very closely with the MOU, and it also ties in very closely with the Executive Committee has created draft agendas throughout the year, and I just double-checked that, you know, so that we can populate this already in agendas so that we're constantly knowing what's kind of coming up the next month. So I'm just really liking how it's coming together, Karina. So I'll mention them, and then there's just a couple to discuss. So on the new charter applications and on the renewals, the PEC is going to provide and CSD will provide input to the chair so that a letter can go out to schools a month before the hearings. And that's in July for new schools, right after the community input hearings. And it's also on renewing schools in November. So for example, we have a November working session. We're going to talk more about that. I think on the implementation year, I would like to suggest that we consider moving committee, subcommittee contract negotiations for the implementation year and renewal year to March. It's, the schools are swamped by the end of April and in May, and they want to celebrate their students. They want to be done with contracts. And I think it might make sense to possibly move those. So that's not a comment on Karina's timeline, but for commissioners, so that's April moving to March would be my suggestion. And that we vote on them in May so that the schools have into June to vote on them. You will see tomorrow that where there is an issue with a contract being approved by the PEC at a school that it gets jammed up and it takes more time. So that's a, you know, that's a relatively rare occurrence, but I think that it makes some sense to move it up. We're coming into, I think it's six or seven schools next year, six schools next year, but then it's 11 and then it's like 22. So I think we need to be planning for some busy years and giving us more time. On July for the renewal Part A, I know that Karina has a vision to have dashboards up for each school. It's possible that if we plan the dashboards, the dashboards would already include Part A. There would be not a need for a Part A. I don't and I think that that is a longer-term idea, but not that far into the future, that if we have everything up there, that is there all the time, and that's consistent with what Matt Paul has has stated several times, that the school should be able at any point to kind of see where they are. So that's not a change, but a kind of a moving forward.
Julia, so I I think that the dashboard is likely to be current year. Maybe it'll select, maybe you could select different years and view data, although I don't know that it's going to be consistent across. It wasn't always the case that PED or my office created Part A. That that happened in between the time that I was at the PED and now. So and I'm sure Commissioner Gibson would be able to give us a little historical perspective on that. But one of the things that's nice about it is that it 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 ensures that the data that is part of the renewal application part of the renewal application is verified um, as the data that PED has on the school. And so um, I'm not sure that the dashboard will have um, you know, four years worth of data, but part A typically does. And it's compiled nicely and in a way that is consistent across the schools, not trying to keep more work than what we need to, but I think that um, at some point, the P E C decided that it was nice to have that consistent part of the renewal application with verified data. So I'm not sure the, the dashboard could eliminate it, but um, certainly um, help with any current year um, data.
Well, and also um, consistent with that, I, I want to um, you know, now knock on wood that we're gonna have consistent information from the state. And we're gonna have consistent annual reports because your staff is on top of that. That we could start to have a five-year chart that is posted somewhere. So I, I don't know that it has to replace that, and I think you raised good points. But I think transparency and having schools know where they are and uh, uh, information already up there so that um, it's not really, and I don't know that it's the first time that the schools have seen it in July, but I, I think that that's an interesting thing to push forward. Um, I'd like to consider the P E C asking schools to provide to C S D how in August, when, right after they renewed, how they're going to roll out the data for their mission-specific goals. I think we're gonna find in the next couple of years, particularly with COVID, that people didn't implement their missions, but they didn't, they just, some of them kind of shelved their mission-specific goals. Um, and I'd like to have them commit not only in the contract process, but here's how we're gonna do it, so that they are, that they are really thinking through from the very beginning of their charter term, how they're gonna provide that data to C S D. And C S D could, you know, say, yeah, that makes sense to me, or whatever, they don't have to dictate it. So that's another idea. Um, I've already mentioned on the renewal that I think we should move that up. Um, a, a more in-depth conversation, I think, and we're gonna start talking about the amendments um, after Karina does her section. Um, but I think there should be some decisions by the P E C about um, amendments, particularly amendments for schools that are gonna renew. And maybe have the spring before a school renews be a time when they look at whether they want any contract-like terms amended, their mission, their um, grade level, their caps, their, you know, I, I think the change in personnel and change of facilities has fluidity for whenever that comes up, but there's a section we're gonna talk about in a minute um, of school operating changes that we might push the, that into the spring before. And I don't, a, a lot of this, first, Karina hasn't heard any of this, I'm not really asking for any decisions now, but
I just wanna say, the, the justification for that, Julia. Um, I think it's a great idea, but I think just to support it, uh, could you highlight some of the justification? Like maybe it's less work, or it wraps everything into a ball that can be done in one step?
Yeah, um, well, I'll tell you from my, my view as a, as a lawyer for you. I want you to renew a school based on what they're gonna look like. And so I don't really like, um, like, I don't know, I, my wording isn't quite right, but um, I don't like you really renewing a school and then saying, oh, and now it's a different school. I would prefer that the school during the renewal process say, oh, we've got these new ideas, and they often do. Um, so that's, and I think that would make for a clearer and cleaner contract. And we're trying to reduce the number of times there are amendments, the number of times that, you know, and, and we've made a decision not to always redo the contract, so we've got this complicated format.
Yeah, I, I would like to just weigh in here. Um, so I agree with Julia that renewal should be a time when the school is doing some pretty heavy reflection on their performance over the charter term. And strategic planning, in my mind, a renewal application should be a strategic plan for, for moving forward. Now, I don't think that renewal, yes or no, whether to renew the school should be based on the proposed changes, which I think is why it got removed from that process, because at one point it was embedded. Um, I don't think that that should determine whether the school is renewed or not, it should be a separate consideration, right? So if the school is proposing renewal, that's one decision. And then if they're proposing renewal with grade level changes, or a change in a mission, or some other thing, that's decision number two in my mind. But it should all be wrapped into one so that we know what the school is doing moving forward. And this business of renewing and then submitting uh, an amendment, to me, does make things rather messy.
I'm gonna go ahead.
Hey.
A few more comments, but please.
Yeah, sure, thanks. Yeah, I like that. It seems like a two-part thing, you know, like there's your track record coming up to renewal, and then your ambitions or strategic plan going forward, track record. Uh, do you have the capacity to support your ambitions, you know, like that, that type of thinking?
Uh, you know, um, Becca, I think this warrants maybe a conversation at another working session in more detail. Um, this, this one, um, tied into that is how the schools that are renewing get that a little bit more in-depth um, annual report. And given the practicalities that C S D doesn't have all the information, but also from kind of a transparency, there's an important time, the spring before and into the fall um, about those, there's kind of a special group of the renewing schools. And actually, I, I don't really see it set out here, and I actually can't remember, Karina, exactly how you do it. If you're doing for renewing schools, are you doing an in-depth spring or a early fall? I can't remember.
Training? Are you talking about training?
Their, their last year annual report that's gonna lead to the renewal part A and
Right. So, and this Commissioner Caddio is why a three-year charter term would be really difficult. Um, just sorry to throw that in, but you know, we're trying to collect data over the charter term, and we only have, we're in the fourth year, if it's a five-year term, where we are already having the conversation with schools about um, preparing for renewal. And um, because their last year is, is when they expire. So we don't have any data for the last year, that's when they submit their application. So in the spring, uh, we have even less data. But we are starting to have conversations about taking a look at your data. Um, and this is why in August, at least that gives us four years. Otherwise, it would be three years uh, worth of data that they would have in a five-year term. And um, we can do the math and see that if it were a three-year term, maybe it's one year's worth of data that we're actually able to provide to them, but um,
I think this also ties in with you knowing. Um, if you wanna potentially recommend a condition and potentially fix something or ask the school to fix it, anyway, I think there's a bigger conversation that, that could be discussed with, um, you know, what, what are we trying to do and trying to not end up jamming um, a bunch of things in December that could have been backtracked. Um, and if, and knowing as soon as you know that you have a concern about a school that's also gonna affect what you think about renewal. So um, again, I, I don't know, I just am raising it. Um, the other thing that's not in here is P E C approval of the um, us, last school year annual reports, and I think it probably goes in September. Um, it's just not in here where they're gonna act on it and then, and review it. And then again, we'll send out letters of concern from that for all schools. I don't know if it's in September or October, it's whenever you can do it, and maybe it's September or October, depending on the school data or whatever. But, but just the P E C accepting and dealing with and working with the work that you've done.
Yeah, and we talked about for this year it being in separate batches so that there could be a more look at the annual reports um, and as much information as possible, which would probably make it a September and October.
Um, we could, so it could be dropped in September and October, it just isn't there. Um, I, I think on the administration, um, the form project, which I think can fit in with your rhythm, Karina, um, is, oops, lost you guys, is that in September, the P E C, anyone can ask P E C members, um, and any P E C member can raise a, a form they wanna identify to review for that year. So that should be put in the September thing. Karina, I have this for you, and I can show this to you later. So, and then I think we should put the form reviews for that year that have been identified in September, probably in February and March. But we can exclude the implementation year, and that can be on a different cycle, that would fit in with the renewal form as well. Um, I do, I don't wanna say this too strongly, but I do think that there's a little bit of a tension between continuous improvement and continually changing a form. It can verge at an extreme on being arbitrary. Well, this year it's this, and next year it's this, and following year. So I think that major reviews of forms can happen. I want them to happen less frequently, tweaking of forms and making them work better, I think is a reasonable thing to do, um, for sure. So, uh, then finally, just making sure the M O U review and the budget review by the commission is put in here, I suggest May. Because you need an August budget, which you already have in here. If we start that process in May, it can go through the summer, making sure that the P E C knows what budget it wants to present by August seventh, so there's just a P E C thing in here. Um, so, there's just a couple of them that I think kind of warrant more P E C conversations, and some you've already, you've already identified, we just need to drop them in here. Those are my comments, and thank you again. I think it's, I already printed it out in hard copy, which shows how much I liked it. I never print anything out in hard copy. All right, awesome. Any more um, questions about the yearly timeline of C S D work? All right, so I think that takes us, Director Chavez, to the new charter school application process, item B. We're going specifically to that part now.
Absolutely. So if you're looking at the agenda for today's meeting, um, I just embedded in that um, a timeline for this year's renew, um, initial charter school applications. Um, and so, as you all know, the applications are received by uh, our office by June one, and this year on June second, you all received an email um, with a link to them after we had reviewed for completeness. So the one application that we received was complete, and you received um, the link. Um, the peer reviewers that were selected and have been reading the application in an in-depth way, um, are rating, they hold what we call consensus, a consensus meeting, it's in the initial application, um, the um, description of what happens. And so they, they hold a consensus meeting because they're doing a rating, and they provide a report to us. So that's happening this week. Um, and then um, we turn that around and, you know, verify the factual uh, components of it and send it to both you and the applicants as the preliminary analysis. Um, afterwards, there is a capacity interview that takes place with the um, the peer reviewers, C S D staff attends, but from what I can tell, we have played somewhat of a backseat as we allow the peer reviewers to really take lead in um, vetting the candidates and the application. So that is taking place on June twenty-ninth um, for this year. And then um, in July, um, we will have the community input hearing. This year, it will be in Rio Rancho, and we've been working closely with the school um, so that I believe that the date that they are interested in having the um, the community input hearing in Rio Rancho is the nineteenth. Uh, I'm sorry, but um, Ms. Friedman, who's arranging for the location, um, is out today. So I don't have the specifics on whether that got finalized. I know she found a really viable location, and so I think it'll be the nineteenth um, in the morning, mid-morning. I don't have the specifics on that, but that's what it's looking like. Um, and that accommodates the um, applicants themselves who uh, specifically asked that we do it then. So then you'll have a gap day before your work session um, and, and meeting. Um, but that's, that's when we will have the community input hearing. We always have them in the community in which the school is proposing to be located. Uh, Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, that was my only comment, that gap date. To have to, for those of us that travel, to drive up to Rio Rancho on Tuesday, come home and drive back up on Wednesday for the Thursday meeting. It, there's not a lot of economy of fuel and um, you know, even reimbursement that, you know, that it, it doesn't really, I understand the school may want that, but it's always been part of the conversation with the P E C when it also accommodates the P E C commissioners um, for that. We've kind of driven the, the schedule, but it, you know, to me, it just doesn't make a lot of technical sense to have people traveling that much, you know. For, if it's in the morning, people have to, all have to drive up Monday night, stay Monday night, drive back Tuesday, and then drive back Wednesday for the Thursday meeting. That doesn't make, that's, that's really an extra night of hotel that shouldn't have to happen.
So folks can choose, there is a hybrid option, and so if traveling's gonna be too difficult, um, there will be a hybrid option for commissioners to attend in person.
I understand that.
And you can choose one or the other.
No, see, that's where I disagree. My access to participating live shouldn't be based on the schedule because commissioners weren't considered. I wanna be there live, but I'm also considering what the extra money it's going to take for, for that. If it was on a Wednesday, I'm traveling up on Wednesday anyway. I have to stay Wednesday night anyway. So I'm going to strongly disagree that, oh, if you can't make it, then just do it virtually. The, I wanna be there live, but the commission is making it difficult for me to be there live, and that's where I disagree.
Well, if it's the money, I don't, I, we have it in the budget. We have plenty of budget in order to reimburse commissioners for additional nights. The entire founding team of this new school will be out of town on the twentieth. There will, they, they are not able to attend on the twentieth. So we did have three days on our calendar in which we had accessible for the community input. Um, so if it's money, the commission, we do have budgeted plenty of money to do that. If it's time, that's a debt. do that. If it's time, that's a de, that's definitely a different conversation and understandable that the back and forth um for those folks that are not right around the Rio Rancho area. Um, totally understand that, but I mean, we we will not have anybody from this new school application team at the community input hearing if we hold it on Wednesday. And so I think as a
Anyone from the governance council of the founding team at the community input hearing when we had it in Las Cruces. So I don't know why that's an issue this time.
Well, it's not the governance board, it's the actual applicants themselves.
And it's not. Money is a concern because I don't think we should just say, oh, we've got the money in the budget, so go spend it um when there should be an economy um considered uh and an economy of time. I know we, I know.
Read about money.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I know we had a week scheduled, but we've never had a gap in time. So that when there was only one application, there was never, you know, as far as I was concerned, there was never this thought that there'd be a disjointed week. We've never had, we've always had successive days. So that's my only concern.
Commissioner Robbins? You're muted, Commissioner Robbins. We can't hear you.
Can you hear? Okay, why can't we do the community input on Thursday and have the work session Wednesday afternoon? That way, you know, Commissioner Gibson and those out of town could drive up for the input hearing on uh Wednesday morning if they wanted to have the input, have a uh work session in the afternoon or, you know, eleven o'clock, whatever it is. That that way, there's not a gap, but I I I appreciate what Commissioner Gibson said is we try to accommodate and the dollars aren't, aren't the issue. It's, it's the time the commissioners spend traveling back and forth and all that. We have to understand, we don't get paid for our time. We get paid for a meeting. And if you have to travel back and forth twice in a week, you know, Commissioner Gibson, I mean, that's, you know, ten or twelve hours of travel that, you know, you aren't compensated, you know, and and like she said, with gas prices three times what they were a year or two years ago. You know, the, the current, you know, rate that that G A, that uh D F A allows for mileage and that the uh I R S is on for mileage, barely even covers the gas, let alone wear and tear on your vehicle. So, you know, minimizing the downtime that commissioners have in traveling, I think has to be a consideration. And that we need to stress, yes, we're there to serve, but we cannot just expect ten commissioners to totally change everything and and move things around. That's a huge burden on us. And if the commissioner cannot be present for whatever reason, that's fine. But if it's because we made a scheduling difficulty, I don't think that's right. And being present at community input hearings is so much more valuable than reading a transcript or just participating online. Thanks.
Commissioner Karina?
Here we go. I agree with Patty and with Commissioner Robbins. It um, and I'm here in Santa Fe, you know, so most of the meetings are here and, you know, it's fifteen minutes um for me, and that includes having a park. Um, I can't even imagine having a gap day if I'm coming from, you know, Roswell or Aztec, Dulce, or, you know, it's just, uh, I think it's too much to ask. I think that all of us, uh, we give and give and give mostly of our time and we're not compensated. We do it because we're interested in public ed and state charters. So I would try to schedule without a gap. And then I have a question for um Patty and or Glenna. What did we do before COVID, before everything was hybrid? What was the expectation of commissioners and what did the commission do?
So, you know, I'll just say that, oh, the commissioner, Patty's right, the commission set the schedule for community input and made the travel as efficient and streamlined as possible. Um, and we were always in person. Well, of course, before COVID, everybody was in person, right? So now we have this new, new wrench to deal with, right Patty?
Yeah, I mean, uh, Steve, honestly, they're, they were big traveling road shows and um commissioners made every effort they possibly could. Um, you know, David traveled down here to Cruces when we had, um, we've gone as far as um Columbus and up to Taos so that we knew we had an investment of time. But we did an economy of time so that there were times when we raced from uh Gallup to Albuquerque, you know, did a morning and an afternoon to make sure that people's time was being, you know, used as wisely as possible. But there was no option because we just didn't have the technology. There was no option for commissioners to participate, but the expectation and um people knew that, and you know, I'll agree with Commissioner Robbins.
You know, I'll just say also too, though, I'll just say also too, though, in the past, every commissioner came to meetings. And that was before we had the virtual option. So now that we have this virtual option, I don't, you know, I'm just going to say, every commissioner came to meetings.
So then, and thank you very much for your comments. So that what I would say is that, to the extent, I would say the commissioners need to make every possible, not just reasonable, but every possible, every possible effort to be able to attend meetings in person. And I know it's hard in other parts of the state, but what we can do as a commission when we set the schedule is not have gaps. And while I understand that there's um money in the budget for overnight stays and things like that, and, you know, pittance for meals. Um, it now costs me, every time I see a client in Albuquerque, it costs me thirty dollars round trip. I mean, I just, i- it's insane. And so this, and what D F A proposes for mileage and what the government provides is in wear and tear is just not sufficient. So the thing we can do to take the edge off is we can make sure at least there aren't gaps, be mindful in scheduling that people only have to travel to these places. Um, maybe once, we do as much as we can in a region um as possible before we move on to the next region.
Okay, so we don't need to move on to, just so you all know, there's one applicant, there is one community input hearing. It is in Rio Rancho. The entire application team is going to be out of, they are on professional development starting that Wednesday. So that's what, obviously, we tried to do the Wednesday, then we tried to do Thursday morning. They are leaving Wednesday morning and will be gone the rest of the week, the entire application team. So to accommodate the people we are serving, we could do it Monday or we could do it Tuesday. That's what's available on our calendar. If we had other applications, we of course would keep it to where we could do other applications on that Wednesday and not have a gap day. And we only have one applicant. We have one, there's no multiple reason, regions to attend to. We have one, that's it. So, I mean, I, if if we need to talk as a commission and and decide that we're going to just hold this community input hearing and we don't care that the application team is available on that day, that's, I mean, I guess that's what you all are saying, that the, that the gas prices are affecting our ability to be flexible for folks. But I'm just, it seems like a, I understand that it's not ideal. As executive team, when we talked about it, it wasn't ideal. That's not what we wanted. That is what we were dealt with. So as you're saying what you would like to do, please keep in mind, we're not going to be traveling all over the state. We have one applicant in Rio Rancho, that's it. And they asked to not do it Wednesday or beyond because they're not here. So, um, Commissioner Davis?
Well, regarding the money, it's okay that there's money in the budget, but we have to prepay that expense. And oftentimes, it's two or three months before we're reimbursed. And at the price of gas, I mean, it's hundreds of dollars, not tens of dollars.
Commissioner Voight?
Thank you. I just think, you know what? Hybrid is the new reality, folks. You know, I mean, going forward, we need to get over ourselves and just do what we can when we can, and it's okay. I mean, we're still going to be present on the screen. It's, it's, we have hybrid, we have Zoom, and we should be appreciative of that.
So I didn't have it as an agenda item to have a vote. Um, so we're not voting on the date of the community input hearing. So um, I don't know if Karina, if you were able, or if you're, I think you're on, maybe you just can't see us, or we can't see you. I don't know if we just need to send out an email to commissioners um about the date. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. They, Beth was able to find the New Mexico Highlands Rio Rancho facility on Tuesday the nineteenth. It's free um facility to be able to use. It'll be able to host up to like a hundred folks with an overflow room. Um, has hybrid capabilities. Um, it seems like a good facility if it, if she's able to solidify that. Um, but hearing that, I mean, I guess I, last, last year it was virtual only, so we didn't really decide on the dates. We just kind of did it. Um, so I guess I, I'm not sure if that's the way we go about is we just need to send out an email to commissioners about what date to do the community input hearing. And then just commissioners need to know that that's, that if you choose the Wednesday, that the application team is not available that day. Um, Commissioner Taylor?
Have, have we already informed the school of that, that date, though, the Tuesday date?
I don't think we've confirmed the time, location and date. Um, so, you know, and it did occur to me that the applicant team could be available virtually as well, um, given um Glenna's point. So it sounds to me like this is um something that the executive team needs to decide sooner than later um and then put out. And so I will be happy to work with um the executive team on that schedule. And I, I do think um, I appreciate the conversation. And um because reimbursements and um came up, um, I'm just going to put a plug in right now that if you have travel reimbursements, meeting reimbursements that are pending, please, please get them in as soon as possible.
Hey, and I wa, I was just going to say too, as well, I, I agree that, that um the, the applicant team is, is on a professional development. So it's going to be hard for them to to break from that and attend a, a community, you know, community hearing like that. Um, I, I just believe that, that um what Glenna uh expressed earlier that, that gosh, we need to, you know, we need to, we're serving these people. Let's, let's, um, let's do our best, even if that's virtual, to, to serve these people and 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 accommodate their, their uh, their hearing if we can. So I, I would, you know, I know we're not voting, but let's just do it on Tuesday where we've indicated and the, the executive team's already really decided and it sounds like things, plans are at least semi-solid, you know, so.
Julia?
I guess I have a question for the commissioners that have done these a lot. I mean, I, I think the community you're serving is the Rio Rancho community because it's a community input hearing. So um, I, I, I don't know if they are kind of looking at the people who've been on the commission for a long time. Um, you know, it typically is for you to be available to the community. I don't know if that's kind of how they practically turn out. Um, but, you know, that may lead to being in the community when it makes sense. And then um, I, I, I don't know, um, Commissioner Gibson or Robbins or anyone who's been to a bunch of these, how does that play out?
You know, it, it depends on the community. Um, we've had you know, areas where it's been packed with community members, not just folks that were interested in the school itself, you know, parents and things like that. So a lot has depended. Um, you know, I'm going to say that the school knew that that week was set out for community input hearings when they did the application. So that it's kind of unfair that they schedule in the middle and say, now we're only available when it was calendared by us for that time with no indication that, you know, they were going to get this time. So, you know, I agree that it's really important for them to be there. The questions are to the school and to help inform those community members that do come and also commissioners. So it is really important for them to be there, but I'll echo once again that the school knew that our community input hearings were going to be that week. So that for them to schedule something, that's on them as well. Um, but if we could at least do a Tuesday afternoon, there'd be, um, I think there'd be less of a gap. I'll eat Tuesday night to stay up on my own. I think that just makes it easier and then go to Santa Fe on Wednesday. Um, I think that's the, the best, but to, you know, to do it Tuesday morning adds that extra time. And as Commissioner Robbins said, and, you know, this is not about, I don't want to pay for the gas. And I want to make it clear that I'm not leveling it down to, I don't want to pay for this extra gas. Um, it's insulting that it gets, and if that's communicated to a school, that's not what this is about. This is about commissioners' access to a meeting. And I know we can be virtual, but those of us that have been at the live community input hearings and at live meetings know that being there in person is significantly different than being there virtually. It is. So my, that's where the limitation for commissioners shouldn't happen.
Commissioner Korea?
Um, I would agree with Patty and I would ask Patty, is Monday, and I have a question after this, is Patty, is Monday better for you than Tuesday?
No, because I have to come up Wednesday.
It, got it, either way, okay. So um, I, I understand. Um, I'm, I think this is a learning moment for us also that in the future, when we have applicants, we can tell them, don't go scheduling P D during this week when we're doing community input hearings or scheduling your vacations or whatever it might be. Um, that when they apply, that they know that this is something that they absolutely have to do, because I agree with Patty. They knew, but then they took three days of a five-day week to schedule P D. So that was kind of not thoughtful um on their part. But, you know, um, I mean, I'm up here, Rio Rancho's not far, whatever you all decide is fine. And I don't want Patty to have to eat anything if she has to stay an extra night um to avoid driving an additional twelve hours.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to add that, you know, in, in terms of community input, we have these during the day. You know, a lot of people, they can't take time off work during the day, but we have these community input hearings during the day, whether it's Zoom or not, you know. So I think, you know, we want, we want the commissioners to hear from the community. That's the purpose of the input hearing, for the community to have an opportunity. Not everyone's going to be able to come to the hearings. Not everyone wants to come to those uh input hearings. But I think the live is so much more beneficial, uh, as been said. If we can schedule it, I mean, Commissioner Gibson has, has given, if we could schedule it uh Tuesday afternoon, that, you know, i- is, is okay. But again, I think we need to communicate to them, these are the dates that we've set aside. We will let you know when you're scheduled rather than applicants telling us when they can do it, you know. A, a court, a court, you know, this is a hearing, courts set hearing dates. If, if the, if, 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 you know, obviously if lawyers can't be there because they have representation, but generally certain dates get set, and if you can't make it, too bad. You know, it's just, i- it's just not the way things happen. You know, if someone wanted to go and testify before the legislature and said, you know, I really can't come in January or February because I'm working, can you, can you reconvene the legislature in, in, you know, April? You know, they aren't going to do that. So, you know, a- again, uh, it was probably just bad communication, but, you know, having but you know, having it later in the day, and, and even in maybe, you know, late afternoon, late afternoon to accommodate someone who has to travel from Los Cruces or Commissioner Manis, if he wants to come from Hobbs. Like Mr. Taylor has to come from Roswell, uh, Commissioner Davis coming down from the Farmington area. You know, there is travel considerations and it's not just the cost issue. It's the time and, and the input that goes into being, making themselves available. Thank you.
Thanks. Before I go to you, Commissioner Roy, I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna, I guess I'm just a little taken aback by the assuming bad intentions on the school that I'm hearing. Their professional development could have been scheduled July last year, well before we created our timeline. So to think that, you know, these folks are already in the school realm, like they're planning their year last year. So I'm gonna go with the best intentions and say they had no clue that they had, that, that, that there was only gonna actually be one day that they could do their input hearing, uh, or sorry, their community hearing. Um, and I'm just gonna go with best intentions. I love the idea of doing it late afternoon, evening. Um, so I'll be proposing that, um, to be as an option to be sent out, do like four to six PM to where folks can have time to get off work and still make it, um, to the venue. And also then commissioners could spend the evening in Rear Ranch or go up to Santa Fe afterwards. Go up there Tuesday night, be there Wednesday, and then Wednesday night, you were already gonna spend the night if you were coming that far. So I think we would be able to accommodate everyone's hotel needs and travel needs, um, if we were to do that. But I lo-, I, I really appreciate the comment, Commissioner Robbins, of ensuring that folks have the opportunity. If they're working, you know, it's gonna be hard for them, no matter what, whether we're doing hybrid or not, it's difficult for folks to get off of work. So I'll definitely be proposing a, a late afternoon, evening, um, input hearing. And especially with, once again, this is one school, so we can, I think it's, it's a great opportunity to really be flexible and, uh, to the community itself. Um, so I'll, I'll throw that out there and, but I think we'll, just so everyone knows, we will propose a couple different times and send that out through email and let commissioners have that input. And we'll go with, uh, you know, whatever ends up coming out as, um, the majority. Um, I just am grateful for the flexibility for folks to accommodate the school. And you know, we, we can figure it out in coming years, maybe wording it differently. But also I just, I'm gonna go with best intention and say they had this professional development paid for, bought last July, well before our, our meeting calendar came out, um, and that they're not doing this maliciously because they don't care about, you know, our time and, and our calendar. So that's kind of where I'm going with it. Um, Commissioner, uh, Vice Chair Roy?
Okay, thank you. And you know, that's what came to mind is, uh, being a charter leader, we sket-, we set our whole year's calendar in July for the whole school year, including that after-school year PD. So, um, I think, you know, we don't want to get into the mindset of blaming schools. They're already being blamed for enough and we don't want to do that. I mean, we're here to support, and I think that, you know what? Um, any commissioner that chooses to pay their own hotel rate, even though they're gonna get per diem, that's on them, you know? That's, I mean, we don't have to do the self-sacrificing thing to be, um, we need to just get over ourselves and, you know, do what we can. So we're in a situation, let's try to work it out and, uh, it's gonna be fine.
Commissioner Gibson?
Well, I'm just gonna say, I'm not being a martyr here, but there's no official meeting so that that evening I don't get reimbursed for. I said I don't have a problem with it. I'll eat that, but it's not an official meeting. So there, so please don't say this, I'm self-flagellating and, um, martyring myself. I'm not.
Well, you're announcing it.
And I'm disappointed that it's coming out like that.
Yeah, because you don't have to announce it. If you choose to pay for it, that's fine. You don't have to tell us.
Okay, I take it back. Take it off the official transcript. I'll take it back.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on. So do please look out for an email. Um, we're gonna try to do it, you know, we'll, we'll get out an email soon and hopefully we'll get responses from you all by, um, you know, throughout next week. That way we can for sure set these, um, there's, there, even though that space is free, they still have to sign contracts and things like that. So we want to make sure and give, um, CSD enough time to ensure that the space is, is taken care of, the date set, the time set that the school knows and give enough time for that. So we'll try to have that out to commissioners and finalize by, you know, end of next week.
All right, um, Director Chavez, do you, you have more on that timeline?
Yeah, we can keep looking at the timeline. Um, so there's an additional step that you see that says PEC and CSD input to the chair. And the chair will provide a letter of any concerns to the applicant listing the concerns. And if you were to read the initial charter school application, you might not see that step included. And that came directly out of the, um, the judge's, um, ruling based on the, um, the Great Academy and, um, and Julia's interpretation of how that, um, applies to this situation. So, um, that letter would go out, um, on the 21st, which is also the same day as your working session. Um, our final, um, analysis and, uh, recommendation to the PEC will be sent to both, um, the PEC and the applicants on August 5th. And then, as you know, your decision-making hearing is August 19th. Um, and so that, that is the timeline for this application. And, um, yeah, any other questions about the timeline before, uh, Chair Burt talks about PEC questions and input during the application process? Um, yeah, go ahead, Julia.
So commissioners, I just wanna highlight this because it's gonna require advanced action on your part. This is consistent with what's, what you're doing in November for the renewal application. You are not making a decision on the charter school application at that time. But you are, what we're gonna do, which is what the court wanted us to do, is to provide this school with information. I have a concern about the adequacy of the financial information so that they are given adequate time so that you're, you're not asking a question on the day of the hearing in August, but you're giving them, um, a heads up effectively about things that they need to be prepared to talk about in August. We are looking, and the court was looking, and we are looking to not have a new issue on August 19th. So it requires, and it's gonna come right after the community input hearing, so you will have been listening, you will have been thinking about it. But it's not a decision. I'm gonna vote against this chart, you know, whatever. It's, I would like the school to provide more information on X so that they are prepared in August. And it's consistent with what we're doing in November, and it's at a working session, so there's no decision. But it does completely, you know, you're gonna need to read that application by July.
And Julia, I think that this, this is what Chair Burt was gonna talk about in terms of how PEC members have input into, into the application. Sorry to interrupt. Whoops.
Yeah, so that's exactly item C. So PEC questions and input is exactly what Julia is talking about. Um, it's gonna be really, really, I'm gonna be really straightforward with all of you. It's very, very important that any concerns you have, that you give them during that, during that work session. Um, I mean, even if you seem like, even if you feel like it's kind of far out there, like you're like, well, I mean, I kind of have a concern about this, but I don't know. Like, you need to say it then, because ideally what we're trying to not do is have a concern come up the day of the actual hearing that will then make it to where if we, i- it limits our options, um, if you bring it up the day of the hearing. So please do a review from now until the next, until that June 21st, sorry, July 21st meeting. You have the application right now, really need to spend that, this next month, doing a review of the application. And, and any kind of concern, even if it's a teeny tiny concern, please make sure you have it ready to, um, list in this letter. Because we're trying to allow ourselves to have as many options as possible during the, after the hearing and in the decision-making process. And we're trying not to, you know, spring, um, new concerns on folks the day of the hearing. So even if you think, well, it's just like a kind of a small thing, go ahead and list it out because then that gives the school the opportunity to address your concern in their, in their, um, during the hearing. So they won't be able to change their application, they're not gonna add any more there, but they would be able to then bring forth, um, some information during their presentation at the hearing. So that's really what we're, we're leading to. And we're really gonna try to discourage new things from popping up. Of course, it could happen always. You know, something could be said during the hearing and we're like, wait, what? Um, but please really do your due diligence over this next month of reviewing the application and any possible thing you see that you might be concerned on not approving this application. Please ensure it's brought up during that, um, hearing so that Julia can include it as part of the letter.
Let me just add, um, actually, it's gonna be a letter from the chair. I'll prepare it, but it'll be the chair.
You'll prepare, I'll be sending it, yeah.
Um, and it doesn't, it's broad. It's not 16 paragraphs. I don't like the third line. It's really, please give us more information on the financial statements that you provided or whatever. So it's more, it's notice, it's not in-depth, and it's not at a level of a decision.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I'm gonna completely agree with that because I know one of the biggest problems we've had in the past is if a commissioner couldn't, if a commissioner didn't come for whatever reason to the community input hearing, and then it's that hearing, and now all of a sudden these new concerns. And granted, the school can say something that day that'll bring something up, but it, we went down rabbit holes sometimes because a commissioner maybe read the, um, transcript of the community input hearing or didn't at all, and now they're kind of hearing this school for the first time, which they should have at the community input hearing. And it opened up Pandora's box on a lot of things, and we just, um, you know, we just can't do that. So it really is, and that's why I'm, you know, I'm so passionate about being at the community input hearings because it is that important, uh, because it helps to solidify the decisions we're making, uh, at that August meeting and being the fairest to the applicant so that they've been able to hopefully address as well as they could the concerns that they heard from community and from the commission. Because they do get concerns that they hear from the community that hopefully they can address as well.
Thanks, Commissioner Gibson. Yeah, that's, I, I think that definitely encapsulates the spirit of this, right? Um, and, and do be warned, if you bring up something new at the hearing, I'll probably tell you that you're bringing up something new at the hearing, so, um, you won't want that for yourself. So, um, make sure, like I said, you have from now until July 21st, make a list for yourself, start reading through the application. Make a list for yourself as you're listening, or, or if you have to read the transcript from the community input hearings, whereas you're watching. Well, you know, we'll try to, we'll make sure it's accessible if you're not able to attend at all. Um, but please, you know, keep notes for yourself and bring up, like, please, even the small thing, like if you think it's tiny but if it, it's, it's something that could make it to where you're like, I don't know if I should approve this school, we need to list it out there. Um, it's okay to have too many things. It's not okay to have not enough. Um, so once again, we're trying to keep our options open, but I think Commissioner Gibson hit the nail on the head that it's what's fair to the school, that they should know exactly what they're coming into in the hearing and have that adequate time, that 30-day response period to respond, to have the time to prepare and respond to any of the, um, concerns that are listed. Julia, do you want to close us out on this one?
Just, just the last thing that I want to say is I've seen you many times reconsider something when someone has had an ability to be prepared for you, and so it works well for you. Um, and, and I feel like it's fair to the school, and it also provides you with the information that I see you guys consider all the time. So that's what we're trying to do is give the school an opportunity to say, please come ready to answer my question. Um, and I, I think it could work well.
All right, um, so I think that's it for item number two, unless anyone has, I wanna, anyone has any questions on that, Director Chavez?
I, I just want to, um, alert Commissioner Chavez that he's been promoted to the panel. If he wants to hit the accept button, then we'll, then we'll see him.
Thank you. And actually, um, I was thinking we should maybe take like a five-minute break, uh, just for a second till 11:30. We'll let Commissioner Chavez come in and everyone can do what they need to do for five minutes and we'll come right back. I'm trying to do better at giving you all breaks. Did you notice no one had to ask me this time? I'm trying to do better at giving you all breaks. Did you notice no one had to ask me this time?
All right, commissioners, we should be coming back on board.
Looks like Commissioner Chavez was able to join the panel.
Perfect. See, we just needed that little break for it to happen.
Chair Burt, um, I, I know that we're done talking about calendar for July. But I, I want to um, mention something that I was going to talk about, um. And I think that I am accurate. So I'm going to go out on a limb here without having documentation on the exact um, document that um, you should be receiving as a commission. An invitation to the government to government meeting that will be held between, um. Educational entities and the tribes and pueblos of New Mexico. At the Isleta, um, casino on, in July, and I believe that on July twentieth is when the larger listening session is happening. And so maybe that is a consideration for some commissioners to attend so that the gap day isn't actually a gap day. It is a workday attending the government to government meeting. And I know that that agenda is being worked on. I'm hoping to um, ensure that you all get a copy, but just this morning in the executive team meeting that discussion occurred and I know that you all are on the invitation list.
All right, great. Thank you. All right. So moving on to item number four, review of group one amendment forms. And I'm just going to hand this straight over to Ms. Barnes.
Great. Uh, and if Missy's here, and I know there was a note that she had to be gone for a little while. She was gonna let me share my screen. Maybe I can do it without even, sorry, I should have tried it before I can you see the gen, the agenda? So I just want to uh, ground us and part of the reason I love that one pager by uh, CSD is it'll start to show us where we are in every process. So I wanted to show you where we are in this conversation, which is at now at the bottom of every of every agenda, including this one. And on, on our website, on the front page is a link to a document which um, we discussed last time, which is what's happening at the P E C. And then what's happening at the P E C, and this is the document I was actually suggesting we would drop in as the first page, the overview that the CSD just did. And put it here, but it's what are we doing and why are we doing it? So this is what we're doing and why we're doing it is on um, a project approved in your March meeting is that we were going to look at all forms, policies and procedures for this year. And we're working towards, we're probably not going to make this July first because we're, um, but we will make the December thirty first to review um, in collaboration with the schools for um, documents that we are hopefully not going to review every year, except during the process, any commissioner can say. You know, this third document, I want to review it. So you can find out what we're doing. Here's why we're doing it. I'm dropping in what you have voted on and why you voted on it. And then um, this document also tells people how they can get involved in any of the processes. It's always the, if there's group members, but also uh, the chair and Director Chavez. So this kind of grounds us in that. So we started with the a, a very large group of documents. I'm on the first page of the P E C website. Here's that same link right here that was just at the bottom of the agenda. But now what we're looking at are, what we're looking to get through is these school policies and processes. And there is a very long group of amendment requests. It's really long. There are, I think fifty eight of these documents. And we're looking to fix that. So I will stop sharing my screen and kind of talk you through what, what, where we are right now. It's a process that's going to take us through the fall. The process that we're looking at right now is that very long list of the amendment forms. And last time you all gave us direction as to how we should start to pull these together. And Rachel Stefosik, who works with us, did a lot of that legwork. We are going from fifty two forms and policies to eleven. That's the proposal. You might change that. CSD might change that. I do want to indicate that we are going to get in-depth CSD review on these documents coming up um, in this next month. So I'm hoping to have a more general conversation where with you now, but um, in depth, I think makes more sense next time. When CSD has been able to really give a lot of input. So um, if we reduce it from fifty two forms to eleven, that would be an eighty percent reduction in paperwork. That's a good reduction. Chair Boyd, question?
Yeah, thanks. You know, I was just going to make a a suggestion to that is that maybe we can categorize those um, fifty eight or fifty two pieces uh, that they align with the performance framework. Something that's an educational plan amendment, something that's an organizational, something that's a, you know, and then, and then have a checkbox, you know, as to what it is on the form. Some kind of
So that is actually very consistent with my next statement and you might add to it on my next statement. Um. I, I appreciate the person that did fifty seven forms or whatever, fifty, fifty two forms. Bless that person. Um, uh, it makes more sense to me to do these by the way you think of charter schools. So I think there's three types of forms. A change in key school operations. That is um, mission statement. That is uh, educational program. That is the performance framework, a performance mission statement change. That is the school grade. That is the um, uh, and there's a, there's a couple more, but they're all things that are embedded in the contract. So I have pulled them together in one category. Um, the eleven forms are there on the Google Drive. They're in the order of these categories on the website. That the numbering, uh, Karina was trying to help me with my numbering. So they're not exactly the same on the website, but um, they're the same forms, but key school operations. There are, and I'll show you this chart in a second, which is up there. There are four of those forms. We've combined a lot of them with similar topics. My suggestion is based on what I know from you all is that those would be regular P E C agenda items. It would not be consent agenda items. Because they change the contract in a material way. You might have an ex, an, an exception, for example, if they wordsmith the mission statement. Many of you who attended the contract negotiations saw examples of we changed us to us to the world or whatever they wanted to change because it mattered to them. But it was, it wasn't a major change. So you may have an exception where the executive committee thinks that it could be on the consent calendar, but generally those four forms. Um, which are school, change in school name or miss school mission. Educational program, enrollment cap and grade level change and performance framework academic goals would come to you on your regular agenda. I want to also talk about that type of that group potentially being in a window during the, the year, but we'll talk about that in a second. The second group, which is a, um, a lot of them are change in personnel or partners. So those are all numbered in the two point one through two point five. Head administrator, board member, um, uh, business manager, procurement officer, governing board bylaws, membership of a foundation and working with a um, another partner that isn't the foundation. You have been approving those on a consent calendar. Um, I said, I put them all as suggested that they would still be on a consent calendar. Again, as commissioners, you can pull anything off a consent calendar and turn it into a P E C action item. But in general, they're notifying you of what's going on. What we mainly did there is collapse them. So if it's school personnel, it's all one form. You just check which kind of box you're checking. The only exception to that is if a school has made three of these changes in one school year. Yet they've lost their head administrator, their business manager and three board members turned over. That would be not on the consent agenda, but it would be on the regular um, P E C calendar for you to check in if you wanted to on what's up. Uh, I'll take, go ahead, Commissioner Gibson.
Oh, I didn't want to, I wasn't meaning to interrupt you. I just wanted to say, I think this is great to reduce these forms. It got out of hand and it was, you know, it was communicated to us that schools are having trouble finding it. So they wanted a specific form for this and a specific form for this. And it just got, I think it just grew to an unwieldy number and it doesn't make any sense. I'm just going to ask about the mission statement one. I mean, honestly, does it matter to us if they want to add the word hope during this time period to their mission? Can't we just? Can't we just say that only if you're changing them, the true mission of the school and it changes the focus of the school? Then, but if you're just mentally saying, we want to add hope or we want to add the world or whatever. We'll do that at the contract negotiations. And I don't think it even needs a notification to us because it's not changing the substance of what that mission that was approved by us is, you know, and it's just me. I don't really care if they want to add a word to it, you know, it's because it doesn't change.
I was impressed at how those small word changes mattered to the school. You know, they were very articulate, but it didn't change. You know, like there was one that really aligned much more with Montessori and it, that was important to them. Commissioner Robbins, did you want to add something right now?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my, I, I appreciate the effort to get this down. I mean, I think it'll be, it'll help the schools or help CSD. The, the one, I guess, um, comment I would have is three changes in a year. I think, you know, the second time they submit a change is the third person. So if they start the year with one head administrator, they put in a change and then they put in another change, that's three head administrators in one year. That to me is when we should bring it up. Not the third, not, not on the, you know, fourth, but if it's the third person in the position on, on those four or five documents. I would say yes, but I think it's the it's the second change within a year, not the third change because otherwise you're talking, I mean, you li, literally the fourth change or the third change, you could have four different people. You know, as business managers during, during the calendar year, a school calendar year, and that's an awful lot. So I would say on the second change, it, it, it comes to us for more than just notification.
Rena, did you want to jump in here?
I did. I just wanted to say that, um, you know, a scenario that might make that many changes is a school starts out with a head administrator that leaves. And um, they know that they cannot be without a head administrator in place. And so that person might be an interim before the board has hired a permanent. And those are two changes right there that are, you know, three different people that happens rather quickly. Um, so um, if the school governing boards are like me, um, hiring is a big deal and hiring a head administrator is a huge deal. So I think I've seen some schools put into place an interim person um, as a holdover um, before they make a decision and just wanted to raise that scenario.
The, the, the difference, um, just one quick point is the it's just going from the consent calendar to the regular agenda and, and so, um, and they could come forward and explain exactly what you just said. So I don't know that it's, uh, that's the only difference is uh, consent agenda. Uh, like you're assuming that it's consent agenda versus you're assuming that it's going to be on the regular agenda. Commissioner Robbins, did you want to add here?
Well, it, it, it's the same thing, you know, if, if a head administrator leaves in September and they appoint an interim. And then, you know, in, in November or January, they now appoint another person. That still is three different people leaving that school. Um, and, and again, I think it needs something more attention to the P E C than just a note on the consent agenda. So my, my, my concern, and I understand if, if the school year starts and they don't have a head administrator and they appoint an interim. You know, I understand that's a change. And then, you know, later on in the school year, they appoint someone, that's another change. I understand that. But absent maybe a head administrator or a, a, a change at the very beginning of a school year. If there's, you know, three different people serving in any one of those roles. You know, that to me warrants something, not just on the consent agenda, but it actually be something where the school come and just give us or, you know, give us a, a brief update as to why are they, that they changing so much? Um, you know, again, we approve schools, we approve missions and, and things like that. I understand minor changes, but when you have head administrators, when you have business managers changing, when you have significant moves in your uh, uh, guidance, uh, governance council. I think those warrant a little more attention of the commission. And, and that's really one of the key things that we're um, called to provide oversight of these schools beyond what, what the governance councils do.
Chair, do you want to be calling on people or do you want me to call?
Um, I could call, well, it, it's a, I don't. Commissioner Gibson.
So I just wanted to maybe throw something out there. Would it be possible if it was, if it stayed on the consent agenda that there was a notation on that, that this was change number two or through or per, and a notation that it was a permanent change because I fully understand the concern about too many changes during the school year. Get that. Uh, those of us that have been in schools have, you know, survived those changes, but most schools, if they have a late loss of a head administrator, have to start with an interim. I think that's just understood and sometimes it's longer than others. Um, but I think if there's a permanent change in the leader, permanent change in the leadership, then um, if we could have a notation so that if a commissioner wanted to look at it and say, hey, I want to talk to this. And the same thing with, I, I think David mentioned business administrators as well. Um, you know, sometimes it's an You know, sometimes it's an organizational thing and if they contract out, they've shifted their personnel. So it really is not the school's fault that that business person is changing, but the organization has. I don't, you know, I don't necessarily need to know that, but if it's a change, complete change in that financial person, that's really important to know because that's the highlight of, you know, something going on at the school. Because the financial people are bailing out to the school and saying, hey, we're not going to work with you any longer. So that, um, I'm just wondering if that would fix it, that there'd be that notation.
Certainly, we can change it to permanent. I mean, we can do it any way you want, but I think the change to a permanent change. And we're discussing this, this month, C S D is going to look at this closely. We're discussing it next working session. So, um, I'll, I'll do it in one direction and then we can, you can get to where it's, it's more final good points.
Before, before you go on, Julia, I, I would say I like the idea too of adding into that form of whether it's, they believe it's going to be an interim or, I don't know if permanent, like I'm sure every school wants it to be permanent, but whatever language that is. But I also want to, I also want to say one thing that's helpful that we've already started implementing is when there is a head administrator change, we do invite them to come to the P E C and we actually have it as an, at, we, we don't take it off consent. They still, like it's a consent item, they get approved, but we ask them to come and introduce themselves to the P E C. So I think whether they're interim or permanent, they should, we, we can continue that practice and they can come in and say, hi, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm the interim. You know, we, we're accepting applications right now. We expect to have interviews in October, whatever, right? And they can explain that to us, but we have that as a regular agenda item now specifically for head administrators. And I think that's actually, I, we did it as like a gesture of like, we just want to get to know people. But I actually think it's, has a dual purpose from what I'm hearing too of just like checking in with the school, right? If we see, if we see that change in head administrator, we can kind of get, uh, we get a check in, uh, when we do that as well. So I think it kind of has a dual purpose when we do that as well. But I'm, I'm, I like keeping things on consent as much as, like if it's a notification, it should stay on consent. I don't really like having like nuances, um, too much to where we're, we're forcing things to be off of consent just because. I'd rather pull things off of consent if needed is kind of my, the way I look at it.
Has his hand raised? I don't know if you want to call on an attendee that has their hand raised or not, just letting you know.
Yeah, I, I think we definitely can. Thanks for, thanks for looking over there, Commissioner Boyd, I really was, I, I like look at my screen more. So, um, I don't know, Karina, if we can ask Corey Donley. They want to speak on this. So it looks like you have the ability to unmute Corey. Um, if you want to introduce yourself, um, and if you have a comment, you can go ahead and do that now.
And your camera is also off, Mr. Donley. I'm not sure if you're intending to speak, but you're, you can hit the little speaker to unmute and the little camera to bring yourself up.
And if you're like, why are they calling on me? It's because your hands raised. So if you didn't want to get called on, you can put your hand down. All right. Well, well, let's leave that capability for just a moment, Karina.
Yeah. And one last thing, Mr. Donley, um, the little icons, if you hover over the zoom screen, they're on the bottom left-hand corner. That's where you can mute, unmute and, um, put your camera on, stop and start video.
So if you're able to figure out your controls at any time, you can interrupt us, um, Corey. But we're going to keep going. So we're not kind of sitting here putting the pressure on you to figure it out.
Might have been an accident. Does anybody know who Corey Donley is?
Hi, I'm sorry. I apologize. I hit the raise hand by mistake. My apologies.
That's okay. Well, thanks for coming. If you do have any comments on anything we're talking about, now you know the process and we will call on you.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thanks.
Um, my only comment, um, Chair Bird about being on the consent and being pulled off is that this, the school isn't, if, if they were me, I would like to know that you wanted to talk to me and I'd like to be prepared. And if it was consent, I would.
So we also have already made it part of our practice that Karina lets them know that their item, if they're on the consent agenda, they need to have a representative present, um, that there is a very real opportunity to pull things off. So I think that's the more appropriate route is have them prepared to speak. And then if they don't have to, then they're good to go. But if otherwise, they should be on the, someone should be on the call and prepared to speak on, on their consent agenda item.
I also think the executive committee, when you're looking at the agenda could say, you know, let's go ahead and put this on the regular.
Sure. Yeah. I think if we know it one way or the other. Yeah, if we know ahead of time.
We'll draft it then to identify in the consent, how many changes there have been. Um, and it's not a change if it's just an interim and, and to invite interims and to invite any head administrators there. Okay. The next group, so key, I'm calling it key school operations is the first group. Personnel or partner change is the second group. Third one is facilities. You have, um, there are a lease term or facility ownership. So I feel differently about those. There's a lease term and I entered into another lease for three years. I, I would think that would be consent, but if I'm getting a new facility, you're going to want to see that. So we might modify that into two forms or something. And then you have school relocation or additional square footage. I might switch all of those, like lease term and additional square footage as more of a consent calendar and facility ownership or school relocation, those are the ones you care about. If they've added three portables, you know, C S D and P S F A can all check that they've done all of, you know, whatever they need to do, um, to make sure that the e occupancy is there. So I might switch those up a little bit. Um, but again, I'm wanting on your agenda, things that I have heard and that are in the contract and that I hear that you care about. Um, so I might switch those facilities ones. At least from my view and Rachel's view, we're kind of on version two of looking at these. And I want to give a clean version two to C S D and staff to look at them in detail. And they haven't had that, uh, that time to do that yet. Um, okay. So a couple of key points that I, that I would like to discuss with you and get input. First is, um, this makes sense to Rachel and it goes back to the conversation about renewing schools. On key school operations, your mission, a change, major change in mission statement, grade level, though, all of those kind of things. Do you want a window like April to June that a school has to present it during that time? Or could they present it at any time? I, you already know, I think we should be doing that with renewing schools. And then the second question on this is we wanted a standard timeframe. And it was kind of randomly either 14 days or 28 days. I went with 28 days. Um, and I, again, you know, C S D hasn't weighed in on it, but they might want more time. I wonder if that's too much time. I mean, I want to be reasonable with the schools and reasonable for C S D, but I think it should be standard.
Uh, Vice Chair Boyd?
Yeah, thanks. You know, I think things are going to come up throughout the year. I think it would be hard to pigeonhole, uh, an amendment window, so to speak. So I think, um, having the flexibility.
I wondered, Chair, Vice Chair, though, on those key operations, like, and I, and I, you may not want that, but, um, you know, it's not going to just come up that you're going to change your grade level. It's not just going to come up that you've changed your, the entire mission of your school.
Right. I know. I understand that. But I'm saying, okay, if you look at January, which is a turnstile time for enrollment and disenrollments. Uh, some schools could have an influx of, uh, new application requests in January semester. As far as, I mean, there might be, and with that, they'd have to change their staffing patterns. Um, so, you know, just to be able to have, allow the schools to have that flexibility.
Thanks, Commissioner Gibson.
You know, I think for renewing schools, it's really important to have whatever changes that they anticipate for their, as we go into the new contract is important. So, uh, you know, a submission by would be important for those renewing schools because I think it's important to help inform C S D with that site visit for renewal, um, that they do. The only other timeframes, I would say, and you know, I agree with Glenna that, you know, you get these enrollment fluctuations, especially after the first of the year. But if you're looking, if any school is looking to do an enrollment increase, I think there has to be a cutoff time for that because they have to have that informal discussion with their board for their upcoming budget. So that if it's not by this time for us to make that approval, they can't do the budget. So I think there is, you know, it's like, if it's not submitted by this time, then the school can't make that decision. And I think if a school was coming to us in, say, June for an enrollment increase and they're starting in July, well, how did you budget for that? You know, when you didn't know that you'd be approved for that. So there is, um, you know, I, I like as much flexibility, but I think there's got to be some, making sure that the school's making the thoughtful decisions and having the appropriate discussions with their governance council. Um, so that they're ready for that. And if they already budgeted for it and they're coming to us and saying, oh, that's okay. We already threw it in the budget. Well, you didn't have approval for that. So you shouldn't have done that. So, um, I think there's, there are a, a few that there has to be time for. But I think for renewals, there has to be a bucket of, you know, amendments that say, we need to know this by, you know, June or whatever. If you're planning on adding more kids, moving, you know, whatever, you know, the big ticket items.
Rena? Yes, thank you. So I think this is re-infer, reinforcing what Chair Gibson said. Um, and that is that there are some changes that are informing the school's budget. And we need to know with enough notice that as the school is going through the, the annual budget process, that I think the P E C has to have approved prior. Um, so I would consider the dates, um, for changes to grade levels served or cap um, to either have a lag time of a year or if it's applicable for the next fiscal year that it get done and decided by March. Um, also, my staff member Dylan Wilson, who has been working with the amendments most closely, um, has, uh, who, wants to distinguish between the different deadlines of 14 versus, uh, 28 days. Um, as the streamline or the consent agenda items versus the ones that are non-streamlined and you make a decision upon. So that's how the convention was.
Example of that, Rena, is that's the kind of thing that you will be giving input in the next.
Right. And I'm, I'm just letting everybody know that right now. Yeah. And so then also I think that, um, 14 days is probably not long enough for us to consider a grade level change. Should we continue to analyze it as carefully as I think you want to? I think that someone who has an elementary school and they're proposing to turn it into a K through 12 school, that is a big deal. Similarly, if it's a, if it's a high school and they want to, um, phase in elementary or middle, I think that's a long analysis. And so 14 days is too quick of a turnaround.
Do you consider a cap or just grade level?
I think grade level changes. Cap is a little bit easier. Um, because it's, it's really about the capacity of the facility. I could come back with a different answer after analyzing how that's gone in the past. But to me, just off the top of my head, grade level changes is almost like a new school. Cap is less of a big deal. Um, and then in terms of governing board changes, um, the sooner we know, the better, the quicker we can start to train those governing board members with the training hours that are required every year. So those are just.
Change their time that they need to tell you. It's, so within X days of them being a new board member. Um, and then getting all the documents to you is the 14 day or 28 day thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyd?
Thanks. I just had a, a sort of kind of a clarifying question for Julia. So, um, so obviously there's some that should be, some amendments that should happen during the renewal cycle, while some could happen during the school year. Um, like the cap, I think would be, um, relevant for within the school year. Like at that deceptive, at the semester changeover, governing board changes definitely during the school year. So, um, you know, just to differentiate.
Yeah, they're not limited. It would be a special group that's for renewing schools that C S D would say, you're in a, you know, planning process, just note that you need to do any amendments beforehand. Everything else based on this conversation, based on the way it's been, would continue to be flexible.
I see. Okay.
The only thing, and I know C S D can think about this. It felt confusing to Rachel. This one's 14 days. This one's 28. This one's three months. This, you know, it was almost, you know, maybe the grade level change is the one difference. I'm a little bit feeling like just school should know one rule. I, I mean, and, um, people are pointing out things to me that seem confusing. And when they do that, I'm like, oh yeah, man, you know. Um, so anyway, we have time to think about it. But I'm, I, I think there's always kind of a push me, pull you. And this one is, yeah, 14 days versus 28. But a school's going to have to go and figure out the form. And if they have two amendments, one could be 28, what, you know, it's almost like, here's the deal, just get it to them by 28 days, life moves on. So I don't know, but that's my view on that.
Commissioner Korea?
Um, so remind me, what is the procedure right now for grade level change? Usually it's an addition. If they just follow an amendment to their grade level. I'm sorry?
Uh, Karina knows the process much better than, I mean, I can.
And I can put a link to the P E C webpage that has all of the amendment um, forms and the policy. It's rather extensive. And Steve, I would say that if you want to take a look at an example at your meeting tomorrow.
I'm sorry, that was a question. I don't want to do all that. Okay. The question was there simply because a grade level change seems to also something that affects the community more than some of these other changes. And I'm just wondering if that's the case. Should there be something relative to or, uh, similar to community input? And the reason I bring this up is, um, I don't know if any of them are on right now, but I know we have a charter in the north that, you know, fancies themselves fairly highly and I do as well. And, um, you know, but there's been just kind of minor discussion around adding nine to 12. And they're, they're okay right now. And I had told them when I ran into them just casually that I wouldn't support that. We have enough high schools in Santa Fe as it is. So I'm wondering, should there be a community input element when it's, when there's going to be a grade level change?
Yes, the answer is yes. There should be a consideration for the demand. So that it's not just that the school is saying, we like this idea, but that there's a community agreement that there and demand for that.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to pull out the grade level form kind of into a different category. I'm gonna pull out the grade level form kind of into a different category. You could still consider it next month, but if there's a much deeper conversation, we can allow as much time as you need to discuss it.
Yeah, I agree with that, Julie. I think we should pull this one out from group one and go ahead and do it. If not on its own next month, we could put it in as part of group two. Vice Chair Voight?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks, Stephen, for that because there are charter schools that have exponentially expanded their enrollment without community input. And they're, they're paying the repercussions because their relationships are shot now with those communities. So that's a really good point.
So Glenna, would that implicate enrollment or just grade level?
Well, both. It would affect cap and grade level depending on how they want to expand, you know.
Okay. They're both, they're both in one form right now. I'm just asking you if I think there should be two. They're so similar in my mind. What's the justification that they, I don't know, the fact that they fit together in one doesn't mean.
I mean, if there's a way to, to word it in the form as to a percentage of their current enrollment or something like that, if they're increasing their enrollment, either with a cap or with grades by thirty percent or something, you know, that's a substantive community impact. You know what I mean? Then there should be input.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I agree with Glenna because you could have that school that was already approved as a K-12 school. But they were approved back, you know, at two hundred and fifty kids. And now, you know, through enrollment caps are now at twelve hundred so that it can't just be grade level. Grade level is usually more impactful, except when you're seeing more and more schools being approved K-12 to start with. And then they, you know, piecemeal away at enrollment caps. And I wholeheartedly agree. The community, the community needs to be brought into that conversation as to the impact up to and including the school district.
Now.
I agree with, I agree with Patty and Glenna there that where I just said school grade, definitely school cap as well should be included. Thank you.
And I like the idea of setting a percentage to that if it is, and maybe it is thirty percent or something like, if it's below that, you know, we just had a, an increase from a school a couple of months, maybe it was just a month, I don't know, time anymore. But they only added like twenty kids, right? Or thirty kids? Like, that's not, I don't know if you need a bunch of community input for thirty more kids. But if you do have, if you have two hundred and fifty kids and you're wanting to, your cap's two fifty and you want to increase it to four hundred, maybe that's a significant, like, if it is a significant enough change, then you need the, that additional level of community input. But I think if it's like, if a school is gradually increasing responsibly, I don't know if they, like, I think they would, should be able to show through their waitlist that they have the community input. If it's like a gradual increase. Otherwise, yeah, if it's a significant increase, then maybe that's something to talk about. So it seems like, once again, seems like we need more discussion about this next one. Director Travis?
Yeah. And I would say that what is defined as significant is not a number, but because communities vary. So in some small school districts, you know, thirty students is significant. In Albuquerque, it's less significant. The other point I'd like to make as we're thinking about the deadlines for notification or amendment is that if a school is moving facilities, we need to know as soon as possible. That should have the shorter timeline. Maybe it's the fourteen days rather than the twenty-eight days.
But it's the reverse, Karina. Fourteen days means they can give it to you fourteen days before a meeting and you only have fourteen days to think about it. And anyway, we can talk about that. Maybe we have something that's, if it's, if it's urgent, that the deadline can be shortened if they just found it. But who's gonna find out? Like, I'm moving next week my entire school. I, I, yeah, the dates are all over everywhere. Anyway, we can take a look at that and see if there's a reason. I think that we can see the tensions between that. I vote a little bit longer for you guys to deal with it and consistency is easier.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I just was gonna say, what if you set percentages like you were talking about, saying maybe a thirty percent, anything over a thirty percent increase in enrollment. Say that's two hundred and fifty students. You know, let's, let's prevent a school to avoid all of that, saying, you know, we're gonna go two hundred and forty students, get below the thirty percent, you know, increase in, in cap. And it's just, then, then it's easy. You know, so I, I think we have to just be mindful that that, those kind of, we don't want to build in those, those easy ways around that kind of stuff necessarily. So I don't know how to think about that, but.
A comment I would have on that, Commissioner Taylor, is that they have to come in front of you for any change. It's whether it's consent or on your regular agenda. You can always pull something off consent and discuss it, you know, if it's the two hundred and ninety-nine point five student increase, you know, or something. You can say, that number looks kind of weird to me. I just want to raise one thing is that it's just in my mind, there are very specific technical times where you have to inform a school district. I want to make sure that we're not going past that. I just want to think about that. So I just want to raise that right now. I have a few more things. The, there, there are three things. And again, I'm gonna reiterate that I really want CST, CSD's input into this. So they may have a different thing, but I'm just gonna tell you what, what's kind of coming up and looking at the consistencies of the form. There's always a purpose. That seems very helpful. There's always a submission deadline. That seems very helpful. There's always an amendment checklist. That seems very helpful. There are, at times, PEC consideration as a topic. And what it often says is, is that PEC, all performance data for the last three years, including outstanding compliance or investigation, will be provided to the PEC for consideration of any amendment request. Part of me wants that always in there so that if CSD sees something and says, they've changed their business manager once and they've had six audit findings and somebody's investigating them, they could say, I'm gonna bring this up. So that feels like boilerplate in a good way, like you should always have that be a consideration that CSD could look at. So I see, I guess I suggest at the moment, leaving that in there, that just, it doesn't require the school to do anything. It just allows CSD to bring in its knowledge. And then there's an eligibility that I suggest we eliminate. But you may have a different view on that, but and it, it seems to be different, which is, I can't even submit this if I'm not eligible. And Rachel Sifosik has raised that, you know, a school may be through a mission change or an educational programming change, trying to fix something that isn't working. And her thought was, why would you rule out from being eligible from changing your educational program if something in your educational program really needs to be changed? Because it's not working for your school. So she could see it limiting a school trying to make improvements. If you can consider anything, like I've just read to you, you, you can deny emotions, but why, why would you not even allow the request to go there? And then one last point is sometimes it's called approval factors. I don't, I don't know. And I can tell you that whoever did these forms are super big on approval factors. I get that on one level that they're trying to tell the school why you might approve them or not. I more feel like, let's just get the information that you're gonna consider, have that amendment checklist so that you have all the relevant information. It, it was a different, it was in that tier one, tier two, tier three, trying to, you know, if you're a great school, you're gonna get everything. If you are having struggles, you're gonna get nothing. Sorry, that's really, that came out of my mouth judgmentally. Which is how I kind of read the level one, tier one, two, and three, that it felt a little punitive in my view. And you're going away from that. So the approval factor falls into that kind of pre, prejudging. I don't know, all my words still, like, they're coming out wrong, but I'm trying to say what's the tone and flavor that you want in these forms. So purpose, yes. Submission deadline, yes. Amendment checklist, yes. PEC consideration, yes. For me, no eligibility, no approval factors. But you may disagree with me and I, I'm just trying to get version two of the forms in the best shape.
I think I'm gonna say probably these group one, if they're, well, I guess I, I would need to, I would say if it's on the consent agenda, if it's notification, then no to those things. But I would say if it's something that the PEC is considering, for example, grade level additions, cap increases, I do think there, I would, I would be open to some eligibility criteria because I don't think, you know, I think it is. Yeah, like some of the ones that I feel like are more impactful to, once again, the community. That, that's, those are the ones I would say there should, I, I would be open to some eligibility criteria. I don't know about approval criteria. I feel like that's, I don't know. I, I guess I'm, I don't know exactly, but I do think there should be some maybe history to the school, some data that should be required. That way, because I think, I think we've discussed this before, actually. I think we talked about it last month that before there was. The before there was, there was many folks applying for things and the PEC was like hearings, hearing every single one of these. And some of them were just not anywhere close to being ready for those, those things to happen. And that's why those old building was added.
I'll drop that topic area in there on anything that isn't consent and then we can see how to fill it in. So I'll leave it as a blank right now, just to consider it so that CSD can look at that.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I was gonna say eligibility, I think, is important. Because number one, CSD's spending a lot of time doing a review of an amendment request. And it's like, holy cow, this school can't even, you know, it's barely staying alive and now they want to grow. So why are we sitting here? Or they're not financially sound? So why are we looking at adding more kids or whatever? So I think eligibility is important for a number of those areas. I wholeheartedly agree that 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 other area kind of looks like we're already that prejudging idea. And I don't really think that.
Let me just read you the names of the first four and you tell me if you think eligibility. Change in school name or charter mission, which would be major, a major charter mission.
Well, school name, I don't think is a.
They need to notify you of that, but.
Yeah, they, yeah.
Charter mission.
Oh, it depends on what.
Did you have to have eligibility?
Oh, yeah. No, no.
Yeah, that's all it does.
Educational program?
That's, that's the one where I think Rachel probably said if they're trying to fix something, like if it's not going well, they don't have good data and they're trying to fix it. And we're saying you can't fix it because you don't have good data. That may be one that's that weird one.
Yes, on grade level enrollment cap, performance framework, academic goal. I hasn't, I, I can sure argue this on both sides of that fence, man. Back to what Commissioner Taylor was saying in terms of, you know, oh, I can't meet my criteria, therefore I want to change my, I want to change my levels. But I don't know what the eligibility, but on the other hand, you guys raised really good points that if, if a performance framework isn't possible for a school, they need to come and tell you rather than fail for five years. So I liked that, but.
Can I just add, we tell them in contract negotiations all the time. You know, if it's a reach, if it's something they've never tried before, you can come back to us. So I, you know, it's hard to say, oh, you weren't eligible to do that. But in contract negotiations, we told them, oh, we're open to you coming back and having the conversation. So I think we have to look at it and see the rationale for the change.
So it's really enrollment cap grade level. Sounds like enrollment cap grade level again, highlighting that form. Hello, Commissioner Manis?
Hi there.
Can I, can I move on? Just a couple more things?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so I'm gonna put in eligibility on that one form. And then there'll be an admission checklist, an amendment checklist as you go along. Commissioner Correa, did you want it before I went on?
So grade level caps, things like that, we're requiring. I just want kind of a recap on what it is you're doing because honestly, it seemed like most of these categories or, or anything that is substantially changing the school as it opened and was, has been presented to us through, you know, initially or the years, anything that substantially alters that is pretty darn important.
They're gonna come to you on an amendment. It's whether on, on this conversation on eligibility, can they even come forward? Or could they, they can't even suggest a grade level change unless X, Y, and Z has happened?
Right, because we're gonna be confronting this tomorrow, right? Well, there is something on the agenda tomorrow relative to this, but obviously we can't do something retro. We've got to respect where we are now, so. Okay, thank you.
What I'm trying to get is your sense so that I can do a good draft two and you're, you're gonna view it again. There's a couple of substantive changes. One is we took out all references to the contract two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. So that's all gone. But on the foundation boards, as you know, from, from Vice Chair Voight's previous reports on that, on the foundation committee, that's on hold pending more information that may come out from a special audit, which could make us add to that. But right now, there is a, two things. There, there is any board member on a foundation has to sign a conflict of interest and that will still remain the case. That's a conflict of interest as defined elsewhere in state law. For example, school employees have a code of ethics and they would still have to comply with that. But right now, it says in there that the foundation that you cannot sit on a board of a foundation if you are a school employee. And we've gotten a lot of feedback on that. I've taken that out of this form right now. So they will still have to comply with conflicts of interest. A lot of our concerns on conflicts of interest were raised in the letters regarding the Great Academy. So that kind of conversation is ongoing. But I wanted to flag that specifically. It was just a sentence in both the policy and the form presently removed. If these, if a letter comes out from, or if the special audit comes out and provides us with more direction on schools and foundations, I think that subcommittee is gonna reconvene and will look at it again. So we're not, we're just taking it out for the moment, but leaving the conflict of interest in. And we will be discussing, I think, next meeting, not, not this set of meetings, but in July, what happens with these existing forms that have things in it that we, we can't justify right at the moment. So we'll discuss that later. And then the last thing I wanted to just read to you are the forms that I, that we deleted. Again, we are gonna get CSD input and they may say, that's my favorite form I've ever read. Please put it back. Additional programming for new school populations. We weren't even sure what that, what that meant. I think it's covered. I think it's covered, if you're gonna have a new population, then you're gonna have increased growth, that's grade level or, or cap. Educational programming, if you're gonna start a Montessori school within your STEM program, you're gonna have to come forward, so I, I didn't, I didn't know. And that list of forms, they're in alphabetical order, so this is why it's like the top form, as if it's the most important. Admission or lottery policies or procedures? There's already a, there's already a policy and procedures they need to follow, so we didn't know how, what, what a form would do to help that. Rachel's view on that is, follow the policy. So she didn't see a reason for a form, didn't quite see why you would, what, what, what they would ask for, because you want them to follow the policy. Food or transportation services? You know, those are kind of governed by different groups. If you're gonna do transportation, you're gonna have to go through PED. They already reported to us whether they do it or not. Let me get to the end, and then someone can come back and tell me things. Permanent change in instructional hours, that's already something that PED looks at, and you have to comply with it, and they have to turn it in annually. Liability insurance coverage, you have to have it, it's required, you can't not have it. They tell you what to have, I didn't know what the form would do. There's a pre-kindergarten early childhood program, I think you guys have decided that that's not something that you govern, and then school closure would be handled a completely different way, so there's not gonna be additional programming for new school populations. Admissions or policy, lottery policies or procedures. Food or transportation. Permanent change in instructional hours, liability insurance, and kindergarten pre-K, um, childhood or closure. We've eliminated those forms, but not eliminated their importance elsewhere.
Commissioner Gibson?
So I guess just two things, the whole pre-K thing, I don't think we made a decision that we, that we don't govern it. I don't think it, it was ever clear, but I think the concern still is there that it's, the finances are still there and merged with the school. So if we don't know that they've got a pre-K program, there's still that gray area. What happens if their finances get mucked up? And it's the pre-K, and we have some schools that share teachers, K and pre-K, so that, you know, I think, even though we don't govern pre-K, I think we need to know that they've got the pre-K program, and that, you know, it's that governance council that still oversees it, and it's that budget that, so it's, it's, it's still a mess. So I don't-
Do you want a notification, or a just, just a notification?
The notification that they have it, just so we know that they've got it. So, you know, you get a notification that something happened there, and it's like, oh god, we didn't even know that they had a pre-K program. So, uh, yeah, it's not a, we're gonna make a yes or no, you can't have it, we know we can't do that. You know, I, I think we know that we can't do that, but I think it's important to know, you know, I think it helps to inform also, how many total kids are we looking at at that campus? Because as we talked about impact before, if they've got sixty kids in a pre-K program, that can impact a decision on them adding another hundred kids, you know, through their traditional programming, so it kinda helps to inform.
Well, we'll get, I'll populate that through.
Yeah, and this may not be the right time to just tell me, the, I have a, just a question about the foundation. If you take out that, um, piece that the, someone from the school staff can't be on the foundation board, in the corrective action plan, we told the school, you can't have, would that preclude us from being able to, you know, say to the school, when there were obviously concerns, that the foundation was taking votes, that maybe we weren't appropriate with the money, and, you know, there were staff people on there that it was helping that, those staff people, and we told the school, can't do that, so.
We told the school they couldn't do it based on the conflict of interest existing provisions elsewhere, so we relied on them. And we said, given what you're doing, and this, this, you know, school personnel, um, documentation, there is a conflict of interest, so by having, and, and I, it's my opinion that you can still do that. They have to sign a conflict of interest form, and if you believe that there's a conflict of interest based on how they're handling their foundation, you could go back, but is it, is it a blanket conversation? I, I see it in a specific, and I stand by everything that we have done, um, in that case, as ju, as, and have cited where we think, where we think the violation is. This is more of a question of saying to everyone, because we got a, a strong reaction, which is, a lot of times there's not sixteen hundred people that wanna serve on your foundation board, and your school wants to make sure that it's going well, and they don't, you know, and that's happened in the past, so it, it feels, um, temporary to me. I don't think with the conflict of interest that we have limited it. I would be, um, that's the issue that makes me uncomfortable, to not have it there, but I don't think we're, I don't know if Commissioner Vice Chair Voight wants to jump in, I feel like we need more guidance from the special audit, and I have felt that for many months.
You know, I'll get that, yeah, I, I'll just jump in and say, yeah, I think we are, we're really holding out for that, from the special audit. But I really believe that conflict of interest, it, it totally evolves around money. You know, if that, if that individual has personal gain in any capacity, then, um, then there's a conflict.
Yeah, you know, I just hate, I, I just hate getting into the situation that we find out as a result of an audit, the problem's already occurred, and now we're, you know, we're trying to put the Band-Aids on, as opposed to, is there some way that we can fix it, so that it doesn't happen, because, you know, someone doesn't get caught, someone gets caught, and that's, you know, that's not equitable either, so, thanks.
Commissioner Robbins?
Well, I think Director Shavis had something to say first.
Thank you, Commissioner Robbins. Um, two, two things. One is, when we're thinking about pre-K, another consideration that needs to happen is, what is the school doing with their lottery for first grade? Lottery doesn't cover pre-K, so if they're automatically admitting the pre-K students in, or sorry, for kindergarten, not first grade, if they're automatically admitting the students into kindergarten without holding a lottery, um, and they're admitting the kids into the pre-K program also without holding a lottery, then they are just not having a lottery at all for their students, and I think that's problematic, so we need to think about how that gets considered. And then the other thing is that, this question of whether staff can sit on the board of the foundation, I feel like, A, there is a, I, I feel like it's a little confusing, even after the conversation we just had. So there is a PEC policy that says they can't. At the meeting on foundations, my understanding is that communication uh, with the people that attended led to it, at a school's attorney providing guidance to that school that, yeah, you can, um, and that, that's what was said at that meeting. So we have started to hold off on, or my understanding is that we should be holding off on enforcing that PEC policy, but then I thought, I just heard, uh, Julia saying that actually it is problematic, so, and I understand we're waiting for, I, for the, um, the state auditor to weigh in on the situation, but meanwhile, it feels like there's a lot of gray. And so I think more specific guidance, like maybe it is, all right, we're not gonna enforce this, but just know that we think you could be violating, um, the conflict of interest. Some standard language that we could provide to the schools would be helpful, because right now it feels a little bit of push and pull, and it's unclear exactly how my staff should be guiding schools who are coming back saying, well, my attorney was at this meeting, and this is what they heard from Julia.
So, the policy is the document I'm talking about, we, I am, the draft of that policy has been combined into the form, and that sentence has been eliminated. So, the policy that is, we're, we're talking about is in this group of forms, this month and next month, being considered, and the sentence has been taken out. So, there's not gonna be another policy out there, this is one of the policies we're fixing, so just to be really clear on that.
Right, I'm talking about the interim time, though, because it exists in policy now, and I understand that that's changing, get that, but right now, I think what I hear you saying is, we're not enforcing the existing policy because it might change, and we think you run the risk of a conflict of interest by moving forward that way. I think that that's the line, but I, I think we should probably say something for the record.
Well, and we, well, no decisions can be made at this meeting, and it's not on the agenda for tomorrow, it is on the agenda for July, and exactly for the reason that you raised, which is it's hard to know what's going on. Someone's knocking on my door, so I have to go. So, hold on, this is a-
I'll have you go when Julia comes back, so she can hear your question, Commissioner Robbins.
Yes, well, it wasn't a question, it's, it's a comment.
We should wait, we should wait for her, just in case, I'm, I'm assuming she'll want to hear your comment, since she's working on this project. If she got food delivered to her house, I'm gonna be really jealous.
Sorry, I'm back, excuse me.
All right, Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, what I, what I wanted to say was, second, what Commissioner Gibson had to say on the pre-K arrangements. Obviously, we don't approve whether or not childcare or pre-K is there, but we, I think we need to be informed, because I think some schools, we've had some schools who thought it was fine, that just, well, they're, they're there, they're in the pre-K, we can just move them in, in, you know, without having a lottery. That's, that's definitely where we have to have, also the fiscal issues, uh, of people. Because you, you get separate funding, they're different buckets, and it's not difficult to document where that funding is going. A lot of times, people just dump it all in the bucket and say, oh, it's just, just this way, but, uh, we need to make sure that that's, uh, the, the accounting, uh, on the fiscal, uh, is, is being done properly, and they are not using SEG money to supplement their pre-K program in any way whatsoever, it has to be a standalone program uh, that's being, uh, done. I, I sympathize with the idea that some foundations may have difficulty finding people. You know, governance councils do too. There's statute saying you can only serve on one governance council. You know, perhaps that statute needs to be changed, where a, a school, so long as you're not in the same school district, or there's not, you know, some other conflict, you can serve on more than one, if you're willing, if you're, you know, retired, and you have the time, and you wanna do it, you could serve on more than one governance council, because if you have the knowledge and the experience providing that to a school through a governance council, I think is very beneficial. The conflict between the foundation and what we've seen, or could happen, with monies flowing from a school to the foundation, and then back to the school, or back to employees, that's the concern I have of any employee of a charter school being on a foundation. It, it's the old, it's the old thing, follow the money. When there's problems, when there's corruption, things like that, almost always has to deal with either control or money, and money is the easy thing to track. So, I understand, we're waiting for an audit opinion, but I would caution about not enforcing the conflict provisions that we have in policy right now, in just advising them, there may be a conflict, because if it, if it's there, and we're not doing it, courts could come back later on and say, well, you weren't enforcing it and everything, so we're not, we're, we're gonna leave our hands off, um, of it, so.
One, one thing we could do, Commissioner, I'm just thinking, Commissioner Robbins, one thing we could do is cite the, um, employee conflict of interest, so that they are verifying specifically that they think they are not violating it, and we can disagree at a later point, but it's not that we're not enforcing it, it's that we're not putting in a new sentence that bans it, that I don't have a better citation for.
Okay, well, that, my, my, my view is, is we, we should be able to, but I understand we have to wait, or should wait until the audit.
We don't have to wait all the way, so I, I think I can, I think that's a good point. What, what I think are the next steps is for, um, that's my list for you, is to, do a good second, second draft, and then have CSD over this next month be able to really look at what they want to do. I think we have good guidance from you, and it's, and, and then, uh, not that theirs will only be technical, but I think that if it's, you know, they can, we can bring back those technical changes, we have, either to vote on it the next day, or if it looks like there's a lot of things that might change, we won't vote, we won't have you vote the next day, but give it more time, so that there's not a rush. And we had given two groups of these amendment forms, and frankly, this is all the, this is all the amendment forms, so, I, I think that's where we are, and I think we're on track for that, and I think that, um, CSD has, has more time coming up in this next month to take a look at that, and we're, and we're in better shape. That's it for me on that.
Commissioner Voight?
Yeah, thanks. Um, so, has anyone nudged our state auditor yet about, okay, thank you, Patty. But, I mean, I think he might have a little more time now.
No, he's still got a full-time job.
But this is his full-time job, we're asking him to do as he's shown.
I know, I have, I have, and I'm still working on it, so I'm, I'm doing my level best.
We're hearing, um, and we get, we get formal notices when the next step happens, so we're getting notices. Just double checking. Oh, uh, next again, if you wanna keep going.
Okay, so I have a, before we move on to number five, we have three more items on our agenda. I think we could be done in thirty minutes, or we could be done in two hours, honestly. Like, it just depends on how many questions you all have, how much discussion this takes. So I'm gonna give it to the popular opinion of whether you all wanna take a lunch break right now, or if you want to try to go through these last three items on the agenda. So, I think, um, I don't think we can have like the little emojis, so if you all want to take a thirty-minute lunch break right now, if you can give a thumbs up, like on the screen, like your actual thumb up. No, no sideways, Glenna, I need, you need to decide, you need a thumbs up if you would like to take a, so only put your thumb up if you wanna take a break. Thumb up real quick, if you want to take a break. Okay, so there's only two of you, so it looks like we're going to, what I, what I will propose doing is taking a ten-minute break, and then go grab some snacks from your kitchen real quick, just in case we go longer than those of you who didn't just put your thumb up are thinking, okay? So ten minutes, grab a snack from your kitchen, and we'll try to get you to lunch sooner than later.
Uh, Becca?
All right, commissioners, we should be coming back online right about now. All right, um, I see. So we have items five, six, and seven. Um, but because item number six is going to be given to us by someone who isn't typically hanging out with us the whole day. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and go to item six first. That way Woody can come on. Um, and give us an update. Now he doesn't have to wait for us to do item number five and then come on. Um, so I saw that he's in the attendees. So hopefully.
I've I promoted him to the panel.
Okay, thanks, Missy. Hi, Woody.
Afternoon, guys. How are you commissioners?
We're doing great, thanks.
Good.
Thanks for um. Hanging out with us again today and.
Oh, absolutely.
Very eagerly anticipating your update on Mayberry Hall for us.
Well, I wish it was saying we're moving right along and moving forward and uh progress, but it's still. Nothing yet. Um, so. We are still waiting on supplies to come in. I'm hoping by the end of the day um to get a list of dates of uh when they're going to start installing, date to deliver the stuff. Um, and uh, because they're aware of that June thirtieth, five o'clock. Whatever's installed, that's what they they have to bill us for. Uh, anything else that's not nailed down into the building has to be removed and they're gonna have to do it. We're gonna have to start all over again. Whatever's left. Do it the next fiscal year. Um, so they're they're pushing as hard as they can on getting the stuff for us to. Of what the update is. So by the end of the day, I'm hoping to give you guys. An update. I can jump back on with you guys again um and hopefully have a specific more details for you guys. But unfortunately, right now I don't have anything to share other than. There we're waiting. We're in the that's still that. Hanging out process of just kind of waiting. Um, and uh, so but I wanted to give you guys an update too is. I will be um on vacation starting on Saturday. I'm heading up to Michigan. Uh, to see my grandparents uh that I haven't seen in about thirty years. Uh, they're having their seventy-third wedding anniversary. Um, but I will be having my phone and my laptop with me um and Chris Montoya, who is in the copy center. Will be my point of contact and the lead uh as I'm gone. So I will be continuing to get updates and that as we are uh uh going. Um, but just to let you guys know on that um ahead of the game too. So um. I like I said, I'll be traveling in a car. So uh when I do have uh when I stop in the evenings to uh. Rest and that I will be checking my email and keeping up in date updates and everything with wherever we're at on that. So. Um, I know Commissioner Robbins, you had a looks like your hands up to uh ask a question. So.
And real quickly before Commissioner Robbins goes on, um, Woody and I met yesterday and we talked about the screens and the placement for. The screens that would be at each of the seats. And also, Woody, you were going to give me um. Somebody's boss's phone number so I could make a phone call.
Oh.
Still waiting for that and.
Okay.
I will run interference to the degree that I can. Commissioners, just know that um. I really want this done this fiscal year and I will do whatever I can.
Uh, my only comment was.
See.
Depending on how the uh. Contract was written.
Written.
Commissioner Robbins, oh, there you go. You're good to go.
We can take. We can take delivery of the equipment. But um, was the contract. Requiring the installation of the credit or was the installation separate from the goods?
No.
Or was the contract? An installed monitor and install this or was it a monitor installation of monitor?
Yeah, so everything that um, it is a state contract that is because it's a state um, a state contract that is because it's under a statewide price agreement. By state statute, everything that has all deliverables have to be delivered and 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 installed if they need to be installed. On by June thirty on or by June thirtieth at five o'clock. Anything that's not um.
Track is is set up. So thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Uh, Vice Revoy.
Thanks. Uh, there haven't been any change orders, have there?
Change orders and the status of what we're doing.
But in parts or and or time.
No, no, everything is still uh, we have to go by what the or I T connect has to go off of what they uh quoted us.
Yep, okay.
And that is the the agreement that they have to fulfill by June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So there's no part. So it's either all of it or none of it.
Well, no, it we will. They will charge us whatever's been installed.
Okay.
So if let's say they do uh all the wiring and they install all the TVs, but they run out of time and installing the cameras. We can't accept the cameras. And anything that's not nailed down, I guess you can say is the best way to do it is to say it is if if it's not nailed down, we can't accept it and they would, they can't bill us. Uh, so they would have to go in, change their uh their billing. And everything to match what they have installed in our building that's onsite.
Okay.
So it becomes a big mess. That's yeah.
Right, right, yeah.
Hopefully, and and I'm I'm right with Karina. I mean, I I am pushing this as hard as I can to do it. It's just again um because of COVID and because of where we're at. With all the deliveries and everything, everything is is still on back order and stuff like that. Now, I don't know what stuff is on back order. That's what I'm waiting for is the list to find out. What do they have on hand and what um uh what they're still waiting for? The stuff on hand, hopefully they will be able to deliver to us and install. Right away. And that's what I'm waiting for uh from I T connect. And that's what I'm hoping for by the uh by the end of the day, five o'clock, I was told.
And hopefully we're gonna be done well before you're gonna be able to come back and see us. So you'll have to just give us a, you'll have to send an email that uh Karina can send out to us with an update. But um, I think I I I mean ideally I T connect is motivated to do this by the because they I'm sure they want to get paid. So.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I mean, there's at least that incentive, at least like or comfort knowing that.
Yeah.
You know, they don't get paid if it doesn't happen. So.
Then plus they're stuck with the stuff.
Right.
You know, if they order it and they don't have it uh installed, they're stuck hanging on to it until. You know, if they order it and they don't have it installed, they're stuck hanging on to it until we're able to be able to do it. You know, so they, they're inclined to, their incentive is also to get it in, install it by June 30th, 5 o'clock. Yeah, so they're just as much under the gun than we are, more so than we are.
Yeah, more so, for sure.
Yeah, so, but as, as if, as I'm on vacation too, I will be getting updates from Chris and that as well. So as I get updates from him, I'll be forwarding them on to Karina and to you guys as well. So you guys have an idea of where, where we're at in the installs and everything else when that, that all takes place.
Awesome. Glenn, you have another question?
Yeah, thanks. I just had a follow up. So would a change order lessen any kind of mess? Should they go beyond July? No, okay.
Nope, because it's tied to this year's fiscal year budget.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and so after this fiscal budget ends, a new budget has to be created for the PO. So, yeah, it's, that's, that's the, that was the kind of the Russian kind of push I was trying to get you guys back in August. Because the, if June 30th happens and things aren't installed, we have to, we have to buy state statute, decline that stuff and then restart over again. Whatever's left and a new PO.
So my last, my next, my last, yeah, my last question is going to be if they don't, so let's say they get half or 70% or what, like a certain percentage of the way through. And there, and then they, I guess maybe you won't even be able to answer this actually. But if they get half the way through and then we have to wait to redo a new PO, resubmit a new thing, like do the whole month long.
Start over again from where they left off.
Right?
Yeah.
Ideally, my hopes would be maybe they at least have the equipment at that time and it could be done quickly after that. But let's say they don't, would, is Mayberry Hall able to be used right now? Like, can it be utilized even if it's not 100% complete? I know we would have to like contract with Santa Fe Autovisual because maybe we can't, we don't have all the equipment to do it. But could we use Mayberry Hall in July possibly if they're not doing, like if we're waiting on the fiscal process?
All depends on what they've, what they've installed and what's in it. Now, my, 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 my hope is that we want to even have that conversation that it'll be July 1st. You guys will get a contact and saying, it's all yours. Have at it, have fun, you know, enjoy the new technology. So that's, that's my hope because I don't want to deal with June 30th at 5 o'clock, at 5:01. Chris telling me, dude, there's stuff that's not done. And I'm going to have to say, then you got to wipe it out. You gotta, gotta remove that stuff that's not nailed down, that's not installed, it has to be removed. And that's going to be a pain for them to do that. Because then they're going to have to take an inventory, they're going to have to store it, they're going to have to give us a new quote. We're going to have to do another PO with a new budget and it's a big, it'll be a big mess. So that, to me, June 30th, I'm hoping, June 30th, 5 o'clock, I'll be calling you guys saying, congratulations, your Mayberry Hall is completed. Enjoy it on July 1st.
All right.
You know, type of.
That's a fair.
Yeah.
All right, Karina. Yeah, so Woody, when do you get back?
I get back on June 30th, I'm hoping. If everything goes well, I should be back on June 30th. I'll be working from home. On June 30th, because it is a Thursday, so because I have my computer and my laptop or my laptop and my phone with me. I will be working from home on that Thursday and Friday.
Okay, so.
But if I need to come in and I'm, I'm home, I can always come into Santa Fe because I am required by policy that, to come into the office. And I don't have a problem with that at all because I do that, I'm doing that right now. I'm, I'm working from the office. I'm taking care of some stuff for the secretary and that, that I, required me to be in the office. So if I'm needing to be here, I will be in the office. I will take care of what needs to be done on June 30th, if I need to step in and do that. But I just said June 30th, working from home because I don't know, depending on traffic, weather, stuff like that, because of driving, I don't know how it's going to be.
Okay, so as soon as this meeting is over with, I want to get on a call with IT connect to be able to provide the PPD and update at tomorrow's meeting during my report. And I'm going to push really hard. And I also think that in your absence, Woody, you know, I, I think that I would like to be more involved as well. So, so we can work on a plan for that afterwards. I'm sorry you didn't reach them yesterday after we met, but I understand that they've not been, they've not been available to you. So, but I can push pretty hard.
Yeah.
And I will.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you for coming and joining us, Woody. And we hope you have very safe travels and you really enjoy the time with your family.
Thank you. I'm planning on it. I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you guys. And please do not hesitate to reach out to me if you guys have any questions, even when I'm on the road, so.
We're going to hesitate to reach out to you. We'll reach out to Karina. All right, all right, so let's go back up to number five. This is review and provide input on MOU draft. So now we are back to you again, Julia.
Great. Let me just start quickly and show you where we are. So I'm just going to share my screen. So again, on every agenda is the, what's happening at the PEC. And it is one of the documents, the MOU is one of the documents that's outlined in what's happening at the PEC. And this is, again, what you guys have said you wanted to do and kind of the history at the top. I'm bringing it back to you only one more time before it's going to start going through the discussion process that I'll let you talk about. So there's a red line and a clean version. We took your comments from the meeting last time and I just, because there were enough of them, I just wanted to feed it back to you. And we are hopeful that there will be, we're requesting that there'll be a commission liaison that would be paid for out of the 2% and support your general powers and duties. The division, we've got it split between department support and division support. We have struck out who rules would be promulgated by, since that is an issue that's unresolved. In terms of department support, I have outlined it specifically because as you remember, the indicators in the performance framework, indicators one and two on the academic performance framework, deal with state data. So this is asking them to provide it to you, to us. As, which is data that we are, you are required by law to put into your performance frameworks and you have done so using state data. So this just outlines it. We are asking for that level at a school level, not a student level. So they can provide that to us and then add it in just any other timely reports that are requested by the division. We have also added in a section here, which is not only legal counsel, but kind of technical counsel, a technical consultation on various issues. Because we, that would give us an ability to hire consultants on specific data requests that we want. That wouldn't, the mayor may not, if they're not already available to us through CSD. And so we've just added technical consultation in there. This is specifically, this is the section that deals with the Open Meetings Act and a request for proposals. And how to ensure that you all can have people that sit on, on a request for proposal commission committee. And how to bring that back. We have specifically asked PED to look at this for the procurement code process. So that's highlighted in specific. Budgeting would be in a non-reverting fund. And then put in a section about allowing the budget to be submitted. Commissioner Robbins had raised concern that I've done more generally, instead of saying the exact time when this budget, it needs to be done in a timely way. So we haven't put an exact date, but backtracked it. And that is consistent with the document earlier from CSD in terms of creating the budget so that we can get that in there. Then I think these are all similar, what's in the budget. And what they're going to report on. Probably the only thing in yellow that's highlighted here is whether we should modify this or not. You all have decided, and Commissioner Robbins has talked to me about this quite a bit. The math of what the percentage of administrative support would be. And I, I think that keeping only the 15% of the 2% of SUG funds, that's, I think that comes out as a higher number always. So I, since we're trying to simplify this, I was trying to think if there's a way to only choose one of those two numbers. A lot of this is consistent with what we talked about before in terms of you getting the budget through. And then this was one of the comments, which is the vocational education. It's, it's that provision that has been moved to, I think it's over at Workforce Solutions. But to put in a section that we would try to get that fixed legislatively. So we put in a sentence about that. And I think the rest is just kind of renumbering. So I'm happy to talk about any section of it. This is the only one that I, that I think we still need input from you. And then Chair Burt will talk about how that's going to move forward.
All right, Commissioner Robbins.
Yes, on the liaison, I think the language should be, because we hire, to have a new position, you have to go through a request. It's part of the budget process to add staff. It's not something that we just get to do. If there's not a position designated, either a vacant position that you can reclassify. You can't just add a position. So we should say hire or contract a liaison. Because if, if, if for some reason the legislature, DFA doesn't approve a permanent position, you would still be able to hire on a contract basis that individual. Does that make sense?
Yes. I think.
No, go ahead. Sorry.
I'll just add that I, I think that CSD is aware of that process and has been working towards it. So, but that's a good change here, anyway.
Okay, the other thing, yes, Ms. Barnes and I did talk about the 15% would generally always be higher unless the number of charter schools drops dramatically and the number of students drops dramatically from where we're at now. The 15% would always be higher. It is a reduction of what they've previously spent of about $400,000 to $500,000. So there is a reduction there, but the 20% of what's budgeted could be lower. But I want to be reasonable and not put a tremendous strain. And 15% of the available funds, I think is a reasonable cap to have. And so I, I, I agree that simplifying that language and just saying that the would not, would not be greater than 15% of the total 2% for state funds. Leave it at that. Get rid of any other reference to the 20%.
I have a question, Commissioner Robbins, just real quickly. There's kind of, if it wasn't that 15%, then they would just say this is the number and they wouldn't need to report on it anymore to us, break it down in any other way. It would just be like, this is it. That's the administrative.
We're still required under statute to report how the 2% is being spent. So yes, we should still get a report on where that 15% is being spent. Because unless statutes change, we need, rather than just say, well, PED spends it, we don't know where, but they're spending it. I think we should still get a breakdown of, again, I don't need to know names of people if they're hiring positions. But the type of staff that they're hiring, that's type of, you know, over, over, overhead that they're covering with that. Because like I said, you know, last fall, the report that we got looked like they were fully funding 100% of the IT department for all of PED. Which is not really the intent of that, of the administrative supports to the commission and to CSD. So, yeah, I'd still, I'd still think they were, that would be required to give us a report. I don't, you know, and, and again, I don't like a GL dump. I'd like it broken into basic categories, the way things get budgeted. It doesn't need to have all the details saying, well, this is how much was spent in, in, you know, by person and everything, how much the FICA was. But generally, look at the way budgeting is done for state agencies and just give us a, it's a relatively high level. But still, it's a lot less than what a GL dump is.
Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, thanks. You know, I'm still just going to express my concern that I don't know why charter schools have to pay for administrative support when traditional public schools don't have to take part of their SEG money and pay for administrative support for, for their, for their schools. That I don't think it's an appropriate use of the SEG money. And, you know, I just don't, if everyone has to pay PED for support, then traditional schools should be paying some back as well. But I don't understand why charters have to bear that burden of paying for the support that PED's giving them. When if they were a district authorized charter, they'd get that support because they're part of the district. So that's my, that's my real concern and always has been.
Commissioner Korea?
Mr. Korea, yeah, thank you. Sorry, I missed the first part. I would agree with Patty. And I would think that in this vein, that we should try in the next legislature. And I know we kind of brought it up in legislative session, like what we wanted on. But have them, not subsidize, but just pay for, pay for the additional stuff that state charters have to do, the district schools don't. It's just simply not fair to district charters that, you know, that you have to pay for all that. So I would agree and I would hope we can make it a, something that we, you know, get a House and a Senate member to take in the session.
I'll call back on Commissioner Gibson, but I want to give a chance first if anyone else has something and then I'll go back to you. So I'm going to give pause for one second. And Commissioner Robbins will come back to you too.
Okay, so Commissioner Korea, I just wanted to say that these aren't extra things that charters are being asked to do. This is the normal administrative support budget and assessment that traditional schools get to make that call. But charters are being asked to support that everyday normal, quote unquote, normal support that they would get. So, you know, that's, if it was extra, I could see it, but it's, it's not extra.
Commissioner Robbins?
Okay. I understand what Commissioner Gibson is saying. And, you know, this is, this is the, I guess, the delicate negotiations with PED to get this MOU approved. I agree. Administrative support, the way it is in statute right now, it's administrative support to the commission and to CSD. It's, you know, statute doesn't say it's administrative support to the schools. That should be funded. And the discussion I had with Secretary Steinhaus a month and a half ago basically was, yeah, just Basically was, yeah, just get an appropriation and not have to deal with, with that. Then that language could be 15% of the budgeted CSD PEC budget. That's reasonable because 15% of what we're spending, yeah, that's overhead, that, you know, that covers the IT support that we get. That would cover the, the finance to, to process our, our travel reimbursements and things like that. That's a reasonable thing. This is a, a, maybe a stepping off point. That unless we want to add in that the secretary would work with us to get statutory language changed. Absent that. Then I think this is kind of a, a middle ground. Like I said, right now, looking at what next year's funding is going to be for charters of about $4 million. That's about a $500,000 reduction in what PED would be allowed to spend internally. Beyond the administrative support to CSD and PEC. So it, it, it's, I'm trying to be, I guess. Reasonable, you know. If we could just say, no, it's 15% of the direct. You know, it, it's only the administrative support and you have to document if someone only spent two hours supporting us that week. You can't charge us for half their, half that salary. That's getting, it could be done, but I, I don't want to overburden. This request as a beginning point of trying to move towards something that's less burdensome and costly for the charter schools.
I'm going to say I'm like exactly mind melded with Commissioner Robbins on this. I think it does seem, we do, I mean, as a commission, we do utilize other people in PED outside of CSD. So I'm okay with like a, a fair percentage going towards that, right? Like as, as a commission, we do ask for data from the data folks. We do ask for Ken to come present to us, right? We ask for finance department to run, run a lot of our stuff, right? So I understand a, a small amount going towards PED to help with our expenses. But yeah, if it's, if the reason they are giving is that they're supporting the charters. Directly, like that's what that administrative cost is going to, yeah, that's, that's going to be problematic for me. But a, and a, a small percentage and, and I like the way Commissioner Robbins, you've explained like. How it's going to dramatically decrease what they're spending. But and I, I, I don't know if 15% is the correct amount in the, for forever. That they, they get in order to support us and CSD. And maybe that does come down a little bit more, a little bit more. But I think this coupled with the language of if CSD is not going to spend the entire 2%. Then they don't pull out the 2%, like the entire 2%. That language coupled with this. Makes me feel more comfortable with it, so. I, 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 I'm, I also just think we can get rid of the like 20% part, just make it that, up to 15%. Make it clear. I like that it's a, it would be a big, a big change for PED. And I think honestly, to me, what this does is it actually just. Lessens how much is going to end up reverting. I mean, honestly, what, what the amount that Commissioner Robbins just talked about it being reduced by 400,000 that they can spend elsewhere. Seems like, I mean, that's less than what they were, what's been reverted in previous years to begin with, so. It doesn't seem like it's actually that big a change for PED, if that makes sense, like they're not spending all of it anyway. So I, I think this is a good negotiation point to where we're giving and they're giving. I'm a little bit and ultimately. Because we have that up to 2% being withheld, makes me feel better. Commissioner Gibson?
Yeah, I, I like the clarification that it's the administrative support for the commission. Because that's what it should be, last year when we engaged in the MOU conversation. It was clearly that you're paying for a piece of each of the deputy secretary's salary and the secretary's salary. Because we support charter schools. And it's like, no, that's, you know, that's where, you know. That's where I go down a different path, but I fully get that we make requests of. PED and I have no issue with, you know, compensation that way, that there's a shared burden there. And I think that's a more than reasonable, in my mind, a more than reasonable compromise on that. And I think it's also clearer, I think it'll be easier for them to report out on that.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about, I mean, I, I know, I actually think Commissioner Robbins is being more generous with what he wants in the reporting. I do want it pretty specifically, I want to know if it's .25 FTE. And, and this is why. If, if there's a federal grant that the PED gets, they know every single dollar. And how much FTEs it's funding, the exact person, the name of the person that's being funded by that grant money, right? Like, so I, I, in my head, I, I envisioned this being very similar to that. This money's coming in, I kind of do want to know exactly where. And I think, I will say this, I think the PED can do this, they just haven't done it yet. But I don't believe for a second that they don't know exactly where this is going to. So I think it is an additional step for them that they haven't done yet. I don't think it's, I don't think it's going to be that hard, is once they do it once. It, I don't, I can't imagine it being very time consuming moving forward. But I think they do this with, like every other dollar that comes into the PED. They do know exactly how many FTEs it's funding and so I would like to see that it's funding FTEs. I think it's just the, the dual accountability, right? Like there, that we can take a look at it and ensure that they're actually funding people. They're not funding travel for IT or they're not funding computers or equipment or, you know, like that they are using it for people to support CSD and the commission. Because that's what administrative support is, it's people. So I think that's where I, I don't mind, I, I, I'm okay if we want to be high level right now, but I want to let you all know that I would. I would fight for more, I do want to know specifically. Like I want to know the, I, that it's .25 FTEs in the finance department in three people, right? Like that they're funding three different people, .25. I want to give me their name, I mean, it's, it should be pretty transparent, this is government, I mean, we're not doing private funding, right? So we shouldn't, it's, it's, should be pretty transparent and public exactly where it's going. So I, yeah, I guess I'm okay if it's, if it's about moving this forward and compromising. I would be okay with a higher level report now and then once they, I mean, but I'll fight for a very detailed level at some point.
Yeah, I agree, and I also think it's fair to the schools. So that they know that that support is, was directly related to help support us in CSD and not. In supporting them through the Budget Bureau or on, I called assessments, so now, you know, part of that 2% is going that way. That they're not being unfairly assessed money that a traditional school district isn't. So I think high level early is, is important.
All right, so. If there's any other comments, you know, go ahead and give them now. Otherwise, basically what's going to happen is Julia will. Take what we talked about today. Get it out of a red line. And then that's when we'll give it over to Director Chavez and then she can. She can start working with PED folks, but also I did need, I, I don't know if you all know this yet, but Angelo Gonzalez. Is now Karina's direct report, so Karina reports to Angelo. And so I met with him, I actually saw him at LESC last week or two weeks ago. And talked to him about that this is coming up and, you know, hey, if, like if you're, if Karina's reporting to you, we're going to need to start these discussions and. And obviously we do have kind of a December, well, at least, you know, November for sure, we know folks will be there. And then we, we can figure that out after that, but I do, you know, we, there, we do want folk, we, we want to do this by the end of the year and try to move this forward. So after, now that we have kind of a clean version as the PEC's first proposal. I'll start working with Karina and Angelo and PED team to kind of see. Any points that they feel like they're really, you know, if there's anything that they're opposing immediately, we'll come back right away on those things. Otherwise, we'll kind of start those negotiations and see. If we can give the whole commission updates and, and meet throughout the process now and see where it goes from here. But now we're.
The only question I have on that is. There's a budget August 7th, so.
For the next. That's, we do have a current MOU that's already signed, so. We do have an MOU that says that we would be, we would be. Working together on a budget, so it doesn't, it, that's not necessarily dependent on this MOU, yeah. Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, I, I, I hope that we can get this MOU revised and approved sooner than later. I would like this to apply to next years, I'm talking about FY '23 to that budget. Which was submitted, the legislature approved it. But the amount that's withheld from the charters takes effect starting in July of this year, not a year from now. So I really don't want to wait until November, December to have PED. You know, go through an internal process of taking five or six months to negotiate. And, and then come back and say, well, we're already halfway through the year, we needed to spend 1.2 million dollars this year, so sorry, you know, charters. And we're not going to revert any of the money or we're not going to send the money back to the charter schools, we're going to send it back to the State General Fund. That's another year that the charters get penalized. I would like this, the negotiations to take place sooner than later. And to actually this MOU be in effect for the FY '23 fiscal year, which starts July 1st.
Yeah, so I agree, I'm, I'm okay with hustling, I'd like to get it done for sure as quickly as possible. So I'll commit to doing that with Karina and then, and working with the team. I can't imagine it's going to be done before July 1st. But we'll try to, I think we can, we can commit to trying to do as quickly as possible. And I think the other thing I'll commit right now is ensuring it's on the agenda every month and that'll keep the pressure on Karina and I as well. That we have to have updates and accountability each month to it. So we'll make sure it's on the agenda next month for an update and we'll see where it goes. But I don't want to give you false hope that you, that it will be back by July 1 because we can't. All right, um. All right, thank you all for that and we'll go ahead and move to item number seven, subcommittee updates. A is virtual schools and I think I can quickly say that we weren't able to meet and it's my fault, I had a work emergency come up and so I had to. Reschedule that one in the last minute, so sorry, Sam. I apologize for that and so we didn't meet since last month and we'll be meeting in the next couple of weeks. The next one is item, or let me make, stop Commissioner Gibson or Davis, do you want to say anything else about that? That's basically it, right? Okay, um, next one is performance framework project team, so Commissioner Voight. You're on mute still.
I'm going to share my screen, but I just pulled this book that I, I haven't, it's on my desk, I haven't read in a while. This is such a great book, if anyone wants a really good read, it's called Community. The Structure of Belonging by Peter Bloch. He was, he gave this to all of the Kellogg fellows when I was at with Kellogg a few years ago. But this book is so. It's so important for just society in general, so I just wanted to share that with you. So I'm going to share my screen now and I'll just go through the timeline of what we've done. Let me see, where's the share screen on the Google Docs?
It's the green button at the bottom.
Oh, thank you.
Zoom, you got to share from Zoom, yeah.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Hold on. Hold on. I see. Yeah, here it is. Can everyone see it saying, okay, super. So just to go through kind of where we're at, what we've done and, um, I just want to let everyone know that the reason this is taking a while is because. The project team has put a lot of intentionality behind the work. And as I'm scrolling down, I'm going to just kind of talk about. Our intentions. Of where we're at right now, we wanted to really go beyond. The PED accountability. We wanted to promote equity. While preserving autonomy and the unique missions of the schools. We wanted to include inputs and outputs. Flag egregious problems. Identify where schools are strong. We want to elevate innovation, of course. We want to include. Transparency and specificity. And also, and most importantly, is utilize mixed methods, which would be qualitative and quantitative. Methods of collecting data. And so we, when we started this project, we asked ourselves. You know, what is it, what is it we're looking to see from our schools? And so that's where the big discussion has been. But we wanted to really honor multiple measures as well. So something that has really come out of this work from all of these months is. To utilize the results-based accountability framework. And the RBA, I think. We got a presentation of RBA a couple of months or three months ago, maybe by Deborah Good. And so RBA has three questions, as we know, number one, how much did we do? Number two, how well did we do it? Number three, is anyone better off? And so when we look at the performance framework and we're trying to answer these questions for ourselves. Number one, how much did we do? What kind of point towards? The client served, the number of activities. And compliance, definitely, and then. Number two, like how well did we do it? Could essentially be the school's narrative. It would be the qualitative data. The satisfaction rates, maybe the percentage rates or the ratios. And the number three question. Is anyone better off? Could reflect towards overall effort. The data. Is behavior better, is attendance better, knowledge, skills, circumstance, academics, definitely. So when we look at how we define success. And the acceptable data sources. This is kind of where we're at right now and that's putting the metrics behind that. So, so this is where we're at right now. We moved this target date back, we should have a new draft, hopefully. To present to the PEC during our July meeting. And the presentation today from the MLSS, I was really inspired to bring some of those elements. Into section number. Two and three to permeate an RBA rubric, I think that would be. Something that we can go forward with next. Also, future focus is no longer facilitating for us as of our last meeting this week. And so I think Karina is going to be looking at bringing in another facilitation contractor. Does anyone else from the project team want to add to any of that?
I want to add to, but Glenna, what's the timeline here?
I just put it up, it was just on the screen. You're, you're muted.
I looked away and now I just have everybody, sorry about that, okay, that's fine.
Okay, and you got it, it's a Google Doc.
I know, I have it.
You're on the project team.
I know.
All right, anything else, Karina?
I'll, I'll say again, I know next week. Glenna and Karina and I are trying to meet with NACA, they gave a proposal for.
um Glenna and Karina and I are trying to meet with NACSA. They gave a proposal for working with us on our performance framework. Um so we'll be talking with the project team about that um soon as well. So um, you know, as NACSA members, they can, they'll do a a lot of free work. And actually, I'm really grateful, Commissioner Gibson, I had talked to her before I talked to them, and I'm like, you tell me about them. She's like, well, they'll do some work for free. They'll do a lot of work for a lot of money. And that's exactly what it is. So they gave a proposal with, you know, what what's included in our membership, and I think we should, we can and will, you know, definitely utilize that. But there's a couple of different other opportunities in which we can pay for some more facilitation or partnership with them. Um they also have a model performance framework coming out in October. Um so that'll be from the national level, which will be really interesting uh to kind of see the work that we've already been doing. Um it seems pretty aligned with what they're saying that they're doing. So it'll be interesting to see what that looks like too. So um I think that those are important things for the commission to know about um before it happens. Uh Julia? And then Karina?
The project uh time, the document timeline, what we entered into with the renewing schools and potentially the schools one year before requires any, the contract and any performance frameworks and an intervention letter probably as a separate document to be considered in August and then September, approved in September. So two working sessions and then a vote with strong drafts, which is where you guys are working towards. And then um and then to have the schools uh negotiate new documents um under the new contract in October. So there is a um timeline for getting whatever documents are ready, we can use them for that then.
Yeah, and so um this target for approval by PEC, we're hoping um that it would be sooner than December. Uh we're thinking about, I know we don't have a meeting in November, but we're thinking about adding a meeting. Is that right, Becca, or a work session? Just to present a the latest draft or a newer draft, four or five. Uh right now, I think we're on three uh for next month, but to hopefully have the final draft by November. Is that right?
Yeah, we're um so I think in in full transparency, it's unlikely that we would meet that August, September deadline. Um just with the work that's going in, I think the amount of um input that we need from the entire commission, number one, also from the public. Um so I think it's better for you to know, Julia, that we're likely not going to be meeting that, and so they will be using that performance framework um as was negotiated uh.
And we can do the contract and the um and the intervention ladder, so
Right.
more of the contract.
Yes.
So we can continue to work on it, but that is set um and agreed for them from the last renewal.
Right. Karina?
Yeah, and I you've um said many of the things that I was going to say, Chair Burt, um that I I think it is important for us to see where um other authorizers are shifting their perspective. So when we talk about moving away from being solely about compliance and looking at quality charter schools, there's been a lot of really careful thinking across the nation about what that means and recognition that there are now in existence a lot of different types of charter schools that are not gonna all produce the same sorts of results, that they're investing their time and energy, their mission is about something that would produce a different um profile of a graduate, if you will, right? So um I think that it's important that we take the time that's needed to look not only at um you know, what some of the national thinking is, but to get the input from our stakeholders and even to run some trial runs on an example performance framework before putting it into policy. I think the whole conversation that we had today about, you know, PEC policies, um when maybe we didn't have the authority to have something written in the policy, um I'm hoping that we are avoiding those sort of pitfalls and really going into this. It's taking longer than I know the plan that Julia has created um fits, but I think it's worthwhile to have a really carefully thought-through performance framework.
Yep, definitely. Thanks.
Thanks. All right. Yeah, so the main takeaway is all of you will see the next draft pretty soon. That's like what I think you need to know. All right.
We'll put it on our website again to get feedback from stakeholders. Yeah.
All right, and the next one, so um you'll see, item C says foundation. You'll see that it says on hold until they reconvene. So Glenna gave the update last month about put putting that um subcommittee on pause um for a little while. So I'm after today, I'll skip over that one until it's back up. So when you see on hold, that means that there's no updates. They 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 did not meet. They're not, there's no plans to meet at that point. So when it's not on hold, we'll take that off, and they'll start giving updates again. Um and then the last one's budget. Um we didn't meet it as a subcommittee, but I don't know if Director Chavez, you want to say anything? I know we're closing out fiscal year and that's the main thing for the budget. So um they there is, I know um I know personally, and I know from many of you that we're getting reimbursements um coming in there. I Karina just talked about how they they did hire someone new, so we should be able to see those being processed um uh now, moving
Oh, in fact.
Those back ones.
In fact, actually, I'm wondering if Felicia can be promoted to the panel and say hello to the commissioners right now, since she's she's out tomorrow. But um during my report, um I was going to let everybody know um that I have hired the business operations um staff person that replaces Debbie Dalbo. Um so Felicia Gonzalez uh just started this week. Um I'm super excited to have her on the team. Felicia, if you want to take your camera off and say a few words, meet the commissioners and uh commission. Um let me show you who is going to help me with all things financial. You have to unmute your little microphone at the bottom.
Thank you. Um hello, everybody. My name is Felicia Gonzalez, and uh today is my third day with uh PED, and I'm super excited to join this division, and I'm excited to learn. And I am open to any feedback or any um type of assistance that is required.
And I just
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
And my banker counselor, happy you're here.
She is prioritizing the work on PEC travel, which is why I asked you all to get those travel forms in. Um she's already met with Bev, she's met with Woody, she's um attended a DocuSign training, she's getting ready to do the DFA travel. Um I see Commissioner Robbins has something special to say.
Yeah, well, I've said this periodically. We got a report for last fiscal year. I haven't seen any report on financial spending by PED for the entire uh current fiscal year, which to me is very disappointing. Um periodic reporting doesn't mean once a year, and you get that report in October when everything has to be closed out by the first week of August. So I would like to see a report through the third quarter of the current fiscal year as soon as possible. And that by our August meeting, we have a report for the current fiscal year in total. Uh again, pulling that information is a matter of minutes, not days or hours. It's literally, you can go in and set it up. You could do it in less than an hour. Um but I would like to see that information on a more regular basis. Thank you, and Felicia, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Commissioner Robbins. And um I think last time we pulled the quick report and gave it to you, you gave me a hard time because it wasn't analyzed in accordance with the way the PEC's budget was set. But we're, we are working on it, and again, um I think the transition and staff definitely slowed us down. Um I don't want to overwhelm Felicia. Right now, she's focusing on your travel, so get those forms in. But moving forward, my aim is to provide more regular um input and more regular reports on the financial um the financials. That is not just a dump of the spreadsheet, but an analyzed uh budget so that you know how you budgeted and how the spending is going according to that. And right now, if I were to present to you, because you're right, I could very easily get a hold of those spreadsheets, and it won't make any sense. So um so thank you for bearing with us. Thank you, Felicia, for jumping on. Thank you for agreeing to do minutes for this meeting last minute. Um and um I know that um our work moving forward will uh be better because you're here.
Thank you.
Sorry, everyone, I lost my agenda for a minute. And actually, that's it for it. That's all, that's all we have for today. So um thank you all for today. We will see you tomorrow morning, nine AM. Um thanks. We'll see y'all tomorrow.